Vice Mayor Dick Jean.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landr.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spalding.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Speke, as we already said, and Mayor Chris Howey.
Here. Let's roll right into it. TML Bond Fund. Boyd also had to attend a meeting.
I'm not saying we ought to make a note.
Yeah, Boyd will be here. He had to attend a kind of emergency meeting over at the new fire station. But will be here shortly. First item on the agenda is the TML Bond Fund presentation and discussion. Carol, if you'll walk us through that.
All right. We have a gentleman here from the Bond Fund. If you'd like to come on up here, Steve. It doesn't matter where.
Either one.
And I'm really just going to let Steve explain everything to you. I passed out and entered seats is the most up-to-date and current information. And you'll see it says July the 31st. That was the information that they sent us. It's the most recent. And the big change from what you got by email is there was a slight decrease in the fixed rate and a slight increase in the variable rate. Other than that, there's really no change between the documents. But this is in regards to the proposed funding for the new fire station and equipment.
For the record, can you get your name and company on the?
Yes, my name's Steve Queener, Q-U-E-E-N-E-R. I'm with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund.
All right. What are we signing away here?
Well, first, let me commend you for meeting on a Friday afternoon. That's pretty good. There's not many folks that would do that. I'm not going to bore you with it, read all this that Carol and Boyd had given you, but let me just hit a couple of things of what we've proposed. Linda and I met with Carol and Boyd a couple of weeks ago, and we've updated, as she mentioned, since then, the report. But we've got three options. You have two fixed rate programs, which one is a five-year, one is a seven-year, and then you have a variable rate program. The cost of issuance on both fixed and variable is $18,000 for the total $3 million. The good thing about the fixed rate program, it's a draw program if you choose it to be. So you only pay interest on what you draw for the first three years. Or if you want the whole $3 million day one, we can do that as well. A lot of cities and towns choose to do it as a draw because they don't have to pay interest on that until they actually need it.
And if I could, that's something that's new. Before, on the fixed rate, you couldn't do a draw.
Couldn't do that. But we do that on the variable.
Which could, right. But now we can do it on the fixed rate also.
Exactly. So that's been a good tool for cities and towns to be able to use that option.
You said the first three years. What happens after that?
Well, you have to draw it all after three. By the third year, you have to take it all out, or if you're not using it, or if you don't need it, you wouldn't need to. But yeah, you'd have to, by the third year, they want it all.
No penalty for early payback?
No. Well, on the variable rate, there's no prepaid penalty. On the fixed rate, I believe it says here that prepaid, in full of the date of approval with the bank, and a 1% prepaid penalty if you pay it off early.
So it costs us $3,000 if we pay it off early?
Exactly, yeah.
And can you clarify?
And let me just say that that 1%, is it my understanding, though, that you can make additional payments on the principal payment day without a prepayment?
Absolutely, yes.
Which is what we've been doing with the school note. So on the day, the annual payment comes around once a year.
We can pay $2,999 whatever to them and save that $1 till the last day, and we'd avoid the 1% penalty.
Yes.
Yeah.
So whenever that annual payment comes around, we can double up or add additional prepayments.
I understand.
And y'all know how the variable rate, you've got a couple with us, or had a couple with us before, so you know how the variable rate work. Some cities and towns stay away from variable rates. It scares them, you know, and some are wanting that fixed rate for five or seven years. We did get right to the point. We did the two fixed rates on a five-year, $3 million. The addictive rate is 2.55, and that's scheduled over a 20-year period for a five-year rate adjustment. And the seven-year rate adjustment is 2.79, and that's also figured on a 20-year term, seven-year rate adjustment. And the variable rate, as of today, on the $3 million will be 2.11%. But if you'll notice then down at the bottom, we recommend that you budget for your debt service 3.50%, which is a little higher, but Carol's done that for years as well. But it's really left to you all which route you want to go.
And the 20-year on the maturity as well?
Yes, yes.
Of the fixed rate?
Yes, both of them. Like I said, cost of issuance for both is $18,000, and that's for the variable and the fixed loan.
What did we pay cost of issuance on the last one, Carol?
I think it was $18,000.
And that's just the highlights of it. Like I said, I won't read the details to you. You've got it in front of you, but...
Just to remind everybody, why we have to do this is because we have to have a separate financing mechanism for the fire station in case of a potential deannexation of Wintry and Fox Run. If we have it in that separate note, if they do deannex, they'd be obligated to pay us back for our investment. But it has to be in a separate note. Any other questions on this?
Has the town used the variable rate in the past?
That's what our current million-dollar note is, is the variable rate.
And interest rates during that time have been extremely stable?
And I would say that in looking at this, Boyd and I discussed the fact that this, the fixed rate is much more favorable this time around than the previous discussions. So this makes it a much more realistic option this time, I think, than before.
And the difference in the rate between the fixed and the current, tell me again?
2.55 if you're going with the five-year versus 2.11 for the variable. The variable's currently at 2.1.
So it is significant.
2.79.
Different.
Well, it's a couple of years.
With seven years, 2.7, which, you know, then you're fixed for seven years at 2.7.
And being fixed, you know exactly every year your annual payment. You know, where Carol, right now, she's every month, you know, paying...
It's a different amount.
Totally, yeah. So it makes it a little easier as far as budgeting, you know exactly what that payment is annually.
The reason we went variable last time was because it was more attractive.
Oh, yeah.
That was a clear decision back in the...
Right.
Okay, very good. After the five and seven, what is the range that you can move it?
You talking about term-wise after that? Well, you know, we don't know. That's left up to the bank. And 180 days out, they'll send Carol...
So we don't have a cap or anything?
No, you can't do caps.
Now, what we'll do is if it's just out of the ceiling, then we'll work with Carol and Boyd to refinance, find something more attractive for your town. And that's the good part about our bond fund. We're here for you guys. That's who we work for, so we don't work outside of that. So if that happens, knock on wood, it doesn't happen often, but if it does, then we work to find the other way.
Do you dare, any future bond rates?
No, I don't. And right now, they're sort of all overboard. That's why variable, you know, we tell you to budget three and a half for your debt service. You know, it's been real good, though. I mean, it's been real good. I think everybody thought with the change in administration and all, that, you know, rates might do something, but believe it or not, it really...
It has gone up over the course of our other note. So there has been an increase in it over the...
Mr. Greenspan said this morning that this is a, there's a bond bubble. And if, that the bond bubble, it means bond prices are going to decline, which means interest rates are going to go kaboom.
Yeah.
So that's one thing we have to... I mean, if it were anybody else but Alan Greenspan, I wouldn't mention it, but Alan Greenspan is a financial person of great import. And so when he speaks, people have to listen. So we have to take that into consideration.
These are phenomenal terms, though.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on it? What do we need to do, Carol? Anything?
At this point, no.
So this will be on our agenda, regular meeting.
So I would kind of like to hear some discussion from you guys about which the fixed or the variable...
I like the seven-year, 2.7. I'd like to know what we're going to have.
And I know that Boyd was favoring the two, the five-year.
Yeah.
Because it's at a lower rate, and based on the fact that he doesn't, he didn't think that the interest rate was going to grow as much in five years as it might potentially in seven, he saw an advantage to getting it refinanced at five years where the rate might still be more reasonable than seven years out. So that was his...
Guaranteed two years, you're 0.15. 0.5%. I mean, that's nothing.
We still have a reasonably good bond rating.
We are, we are still, yeah, we still have Moody's Day.
Is that taken into consideration on these rates?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Are we, why are we not considering, it's probably an ignorant question on my part, but why are we not considering that we would just pay it off in five years? And what our payment schedule, how do we normally decide what that's going to be?
Well, it's a large amount. I mean, to pay $3 million off in five years is substantial.
But we could do that under our budget.
Right. So what would our intention be under our budget?
To pay it out over the term of concessions, it'd be, what was it, 20 years?
20 years, yeah. It's the term.
To pay it out over 20.
You can't get money cheaper than this.
For an example...
This is the last thing you want to pay off.
In here is the...
Like you pay your credit card debt off first because it's 15%, whatever. This is the last thing you pay off. This is a great deal.
And in here is the payment schedules kind of thing, councilmember. And so like on the seven-year fixed rate, the first principal payment is $114,000. So, and that's based on a 20-year. So you can see where it could be very substantial.
And we can pay it down early if we need to.
If we have the funds and choose to do so.
Just like the school bond.
Right. And it does save, especially on the school bond, it saves considerably on the interest.
If you, if something happens in the market where the interest rate goes crazy, and you've locked in for seven years at 2.7, you are golden.
And for a 0.15 difference, I'd take that bet all day long.
And the 0.15 is the difference between that and the variable rate? Tell me again.
It's the difference between five-year and seven-year.
It's the difference between five-year and seven-year. 0.15%.
Yeah.
Not 1.5%, 0.15%.
I got it.
I mean, that's almost a no-brainer to me. Is that, can we make that call?
What do you, Carol, are you okay with it?
Absolutely, so...
Well, you want to wait for Amy. Unless it becomes a problem, you want to refinance, I'm sure they'll get to the table to you, because I guarantee the rate's going to be higher.
And I don't know whether to ask for you to have further discussion on this as we go forward, or if he's prepared to bring, I have not talked to him, if he's prepared to bring a resolution at the next meeting, or how he wants to proceed with it.
Boyd? Yeah, he said you would handle any discussion, and then he would have whatever we decided going to the, going to the meeting to decide. Is it only one, is it only have to be read once?
Yes.
Okay.
It is by resolution, not by ordinance.
I don't think we necessarily have to vote, but is anybody strongly disagree with the 2.7?
No, I don't have any.
The seven-year fixed rate?
Yeah. Let's go that direction.
And it brings us back more in line with our debt...
It absolutely does.
Yeah, debt policy, so...
Yeah, and this is going to cover the construction of the fire station and one piece of equipment, is that the deal?
Oh, and the equipment. And the equipment.
And the equipment.
Anything we have to do for that fire station should go through this, and that should be the only thing in this.
And my only other caveat is we will be, and I've talked with Linda about this, is that we do have approximately $95,000 that we've used for the fire station from the current note, and we will be...
Moving it into this note.
Moving it into this note.
And we are allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to go through some state procedures, but yes, it is...
What was set aside already? Didn't we have a certain amount to set aside for this?
400...
I want to say 425,000.
Maybe 440, but yeah, somewhere in that range. But that's what we've discussed, whether to use that or not, because that would not be, in case of deannexation, that would not be repayable under those conditions. So, you know, my thought is it probably better to put it all in here.
Put it all in, absolutely. And that should...
And that was originally out of the general fund balance anyway that was set aside.
And that should be the only thing this mechanism is used for, too.
Right.
Until the annexation is off the table.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So that we can track all these expenses.
Because we have an extra million, and you guys have them locked in at 2.7, the annexation's off the table, then yes, we can start putting other stuff in there.
Well, this, when they do these notes, we can only use it for what we're saying we're going to use it.
Okay.
So we're saying we're only going to use it for these purposes. If you want to expand on that...
No, I, we'll go back to them if there's a dire urge, but I think we're fine with just that.
No, we still have an undrawn balance on the variable rate.
I'm sorry. We should get you first, I'm sorry. We'll get you next. Anything else?
No. We do have an undrawn balance on the variable rate.
We do. I don't know where it's going to settle at, but we do have some of this.
But we do, we say we have the obligation to turn that back.
And we said that, that particular note, that we could use it for our facilities, for buildings and improvements to the facilities. So it can't be used for like maintenance.
Well, we can put Mac, we can put three in for Mac in there if you want.
All right, good enough.
So you're good, Carol?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. Committee updates. Centennial Committee.
Kyra, this is... Hello.
Hi there.
Hey, Dick, how you doing?
Fine, how are you?
Yes. Hi. Oh, glasses. That's what helped me see. So I just wanted to give you guys an update. I'm sorry. Kyra Howell, Signal Mountain Centennial Committee.
Signal Mountain Centennial Guru, right?
Oh, well, I don't know about that. So I wanted to just give you an update with regard to the status of the community outreach meetings. Right now, the committee is undertaking, as we had discussed, outreach meetings with various community groups such as business, the arts, churches, education, sports, civics, and government. And we have scheduled right now, business and the arts have been done, and those were very successful in terms of the enthusiasm that we heard about, especially the business community is very excited about this centennial. Obviously, it's a great opportunity for them to showcase, you know, their businesses, and so they are energized to really get together and have a subset of their group be in charge of events. And which we feel is really good news, because each one of these groups can have someone in charge of that, and if the business community is sort of driving that, then they can feel good and connecting with them to maybe even collaborate on different events and help them get energized as to how to proceed as well. So we see a really good synergy there between the different groups and having sort of a subset of an event structure and discussion. And so that is underway, and our plan as a committee is to, once all of these outreach meetings are done, you know, sort of be, again, the spoke in the wheel, connecting the different groups, making sure that they're communicating forward on getting those event calendars determined or discussed, and just collaborating on creative things that they wanted to do that year. So we have scheduled the church meeting, the civic meeting, and the education meeting. I think we're just nailing down a date, but that's going to be held at the library. The church meeting and the civic meeting are going to be held at the MAC. I know we had reached out to Boyd about the government meeting, so I think we're trying to find a date to make that happen as well. And then the sports is the other outstanding one that we'll be working on. And these are all anticipated and expected to be completed by the end of August. So that initial outreach and getting the community groups involved should be completed by the end of this month. And then from there, we just, it's a coordination effort, you know, and an ongoing communication So as a committee, our plan is to, we're meeting again at the beginning of September, and our intention is to make September devoted to a determination of Founder's Week schedule. That's, you know, our planning timeline for that, and, you know, we'll have our regular meeting, but then our anticipation is to just break out from that and really drill down into what that week, you know, might look like, and trying to nail down some dates for invitations and things like that. So when I talk to you guys again in September, we can have potential dates for that if we want to start looking at invitations. With any questions on that before I move on to the...
Right now, as far as Founder's Week, we're dealing with not people, but titles, right, mostly, because we don't know who the governor's...
Exactly.
We don't know who the senator might be.
I have not said, I have not said any correspondence yet, not knowing the exact date and time that we...
And that's fine, because it's...
So in September, we'll have that information.
Correct.
September's when you'll set that Founder's Week information.
And they can start putting in a placeholder.
Then I can start, because I talked to Corker's office this week.
Okay.
I was going to say, he in particular, I think we need to...
Right, but he's from here.
Even if he is not re-elected as senator, which is not likely, but assuming that he's going to be an attendee regardless.
Well, I talked...
And a key member of this whole celebration, I think.
Actually, it was ended last week. I talked to them, and they have put that week on his calendar.
Okay.
But they, he asked, because he said he's going to be here.
Okay.
But...
Get that specific date.
Yeah, but he needs a more specific date and time.
Okay. So that's, you know, we'll come to that, you know, in September with that, come here. The website and the logo are the other items that are, I think we discussed the last time in terms of where they were. They've connected, you know, and now the goal is to get a logo that works with the website. You know, we had a logo person doing that and the website person, and they're trying to marry the look and feel and the placement and how it, you know, arranges itself on the site in terms of space and all of that. So Terry, who's, and Rita on the committee, are working with, Rita's working with Terry to get the logo readjusted in a way that, number one, you know, pops on merchandise, you know, well, and, you know, and also fits with the website. So Bill Sweeney on the website is trying to make that happen with the logo people. So it's just, it's a process, you know. We continue to tweak the logo. It's what you guys saw. The colors may be tweaked a little bit. The image of the trolley car in the middle, we're trying to also get a graphic artist that will do a rendering of that so that some smaller merchandise is capable of being duplicated. So a lot of it depends on what it's going on. A lot of, you know, what it needs to look like depends on what it's going to go on. And we're trying to work with that and just tweak it where necessary so that we have images available for the business community to be able to...
Is there a website that's up and running now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, no. It's not published because we had sent, and I don't know where the domain process is with the town.
But you got to send this one back.
We sent you the website, yeah. We sent you the rendering, but it's not published because we had sent to the town the domain to purchase, and I don't know if that's...
That came in while Boyd was on vacation.
That's fine. What's the, what is the website?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Signalmtn100.com.
But it's not, it's not live yet?
No, we're actually purchasing three domain names. Well, they're, they come with it. We're just, we're going to reserve three domain names. SignalMountain100 spelled out dot com and SignalMountainCentennial dot com.
We should have a donate button on that that allows people to donate to defray the cost of the centennial celebration.
That works, yeah. We can do that.
Can we do that?
Okay.
Darn it. That's a really good idea.
Shot a 501(c)(3). Thank you for asking.
Isn't that we...
But the people are not going to come out.
But we don't have the capability to do it.
More we don't have the capability, so, and we have, we are not...
Capability's easy. Sorry. Go ahead. I interrupted.
So it was not, it's not our intent, as I understand, for us to run.
I understand.
And so as a group, they can't collect the monies and disperse them.
Because they have...
So that puts it back onto the town and the town staff to do that, and so that's why the community foundation gets so involved in...
So it's not, it's not as much like, it's a procedural on a process thing rather than a legal...
Quite a bit, yes.
So they did it, they could do it to the community foundation.
Well, the community foundation is now charging 7%.
Oh, you mean, okay, so...
Oh, they are?
Yeah, it went from five to seven.
Wow.
Bummer.
Yeah.
Can I show you all interest rates or...
Just changed.
Oh, because I thought when we met with them, it was seven. So, okay.
Have you seen these?
You started with 7. What is that?
These are coins.
Okay.
We were in Memphis, see, that's a town in Boyd, too, town or whatever. I thought those would be...
That would be nice.
Kind of neat as collector items and to hand out to the people that are coming. Thank you.
Like them independence and jewelry.
Yeah, you can even buy them, but it goes on those. Have you seen them?
No, that's good.
I've seen those. Sometimes they call them challenge coins.
Yeah, challenge coins. The fights, the police officers and the fire officers doing a lot. See, they're kind of like good ideas you get coming here. That'd be kind of nice with the new logo on it.
Yeah.
And for the centennial, to be able to give the folks and have purchased, people purchase those kind of keepsakes for that event.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
Mike Williams has just ordered some.
Oh, good.
So he has all the information on it, but I think that'd be a great addition.
Well, we had discussed about merchandising, that that's not something the town really wants to get into, and nor can, nor can the committee. And so we discussed about maybe purchasing some items that we would give as giveaways.
That's kind of what I was talking about.
And if it was a purchasing thing, it would be handled through the town, through the vendors in the town, the merchants in the town, that that's something that if they wanted to...
And along those lines, something we discussed at our last meeting, I guess it was just last week, vacations got me turned around, but in terms of working with the vendors for merchandising, you know, we talked about on the website having a way that they can go in to become an approved vendor for, you know, the logoed merchandise and have even an agreement, and obviously we'd have to run it by town, I wanted to talk to Phil about this as well, having an agreement where they're agreeing to only use the logos provided for merchandise and, you know, and just something along those lines, where, you know, we want to make sure that it's, it's sort of a town-approved logo that's being used for merchandising and people aren't going off and doing all sorts of things that are not consistent with that. So, but I can talk with Phil.
We want that logo, but we want to be able to...
What do you think about that, Phil? Are you going to police that?
Well, as, as I was trying to find the statute here at this point in time, there, there is a Tennessee statute that says specifically that the use of town names, seals, things in that regard can only be done with the approval of the mayor of the town on here. So I, I think that there is a statute that would give us some control over how people would be able to do that.
Okay.
So unless they have written authorization, I'll try to find you the statutory provision on that specifically on there, but it, it is there and I've used that.
We'd like to help the vendors, our vendors in town, so we can give them approval to.
Yeah, it should be a fairly simple process, I think, you know, to, to go through that, you know, just get, we just need to get the right language down, but, you know, it should be a streamlined process that we could implement for them to, to be able to do that.
Can you let us know when that website goes live?
Yes, yes. Do you have any idea what the timeline on the purchase might be?
I did not. I said it came in last week while Mr. Beal was on vacation, so I do not know.
We can target before September first.
I, I certainly will bring it to a station.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was the meeting for the governmental entities, is that what you're talking about?
This is actually the purchase of the domain for the website to go live, but the meeting for the government folks would also be good to just, whenever he has time to.
Put that on the list.
So that, so.
The, they're trying at one of their lifestyle sections to have a governmental.
Right.
Meeting, and that would be hopefully headed up by Boyd about coordinating all the governmental entities.
Do you need any of us in there?
Whoever wants to come that's associated with the town.
Let me know.
Yeah, we definitely will, and, and so typically what we do is just let everybody know, you know, that we've contacted, you know, when the meeting's gonna be, and if you're able to show up, that's terrific. And it just, the more people that can contribute to some ideas and some things that we need to know about town coordination, that's really our goal, is just to get everybody in the room together to think about this together.
You know, we're getting, we're getting ready to demolish this little right here. The Transital Quasidot at the transfer station. Oh, that thing has been here since nineteen forty-seven.
Wow.
I'm thinking of it at, yes.
It's been here since nineteen forty-seven?
I'm pretty sure it's nineteen forty-seven.
Can we not consider it a historic monument?
Well, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go in that bar, but I was thinking that it, you know, people, you know, when old football stadiums are torn down, they save the seats and then make paperweights or something out of it and make mementos out of those things. I don't know if, if there's, it would be any interest in that or not, but I just.
That's an interesting idea.
Have an artist do something with it that makes, makes it a memento of the town of Signal Mountain.
Boyd, we were, we were discussing the centennial and getting a governmental lifestyle meeting for the coordinating it, hopefully through you as far as getting that, so that they could have that meeting. I didn't know if there was anything on your radar about that.
Yeah, Patrick had sent me an email on that a couple of weeks ago, and being out of town and getting back, having a chance to get back later on, but I do have that.
They're trying to finalize most of the meetings by the end of August, so I didn't know what would work out for you.
It should be.
I want to be at that one too. All right, this sounds. If, if there's more than one of us that are gonna attend that, though, it needs to be made public, so I just need to remember that, right?
Depending on the nature of the, yeah.
So if you have more than one town council person at your government meeting, we just need to make sure that it's public, a meeting.
Okay.
Posted, and Sherry can help you with that.
Okay, great.
You said you had a meeting with arts.
Mm-hmm.
Who was the, who, who did you talk to?
Uh, I, I wasn't there. I was on vacation, but you were there? Okay, and Paul Hendricks headed that up, and it was just this past Saturday.
Okay. Patrick was there too.
Patrick was there, yeah. And Mayfly donated coffee, so that was nice. But I don't know who else you saw that was there from the community that.
Rodney, Rodney and Volkenberger's there, and Caleb Pargrave's there, and there's a woman there, I didn't know what her name was. She was an artist from the valley. I never really caught exactly what she was.
Helen, I believe.
That's right, that's right.
She, she'd been early on asking for an audience for that, so I'm glad she was there.
Yeah, so several, several other folks, and we had, it was, Patrick did a great job. It was, you know, we all understand that you are not doing this for the arts community. That's, no, that's really good.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of brainstorming about different areas that we could.
So there's no, there was no one person who was.
That would be Paul, but Paul.
He's gonna be the coordinator of that, you think?
As, as Kyra said, he'll be coordinating, like, for instance, between us and the business group. But then if the business group starts to plan specific events, you know, it would sort of be Paul talking.
And we'll have a point person with each of these groups, you know, just so.
I'll just go in there, you have the playhouse, you know, and.
Exactly.
Make sure that they're included.
That's what we did. We brainstormed, and Paul was writing down, you know, just other, because there were many people who, he's like, ah, I should've invited them, should've invited them, because it's hard to know, because, you know.
And then the schools, you know, you have a school, right?
Correct, yeah.
So do you have a component of the schools, it's definitely arts, and where do they, do they fall in the schools, or I just don't want them to fall in the crack.
Right, and it's easy because there's not like a list you can go on to include all these people.
Yeah.
It was good. If I need to help you with the schools.
Thank you, okay. The great thing is that, you know, the people that show up at the meetings are not necessarily solely representative of the people that are getting communications. So, you know, the email chains will go to a wider set of people within the community that may not have been able to make the physical meetings. So our intention is to keep an email list for each of these community groups and make sure that it's including, you know, everybody that we can think of. And just so people are getting the information about these activities as it moves along so they can, you know, join in as they want to, so.
Anybody else? Phil?
One thing, I did find the statute, actually, that's involved. It's TCA six fifty-eight one thirty-seven. And it's designed to protect cities based upon their visual images that are adopted by the city. And it does say that for purposes here, any municipal mayor or mayor's designee may authorize in writing contributors, suppliers of goods and services, or third parties to use the name, but we can regulate how they do it.
Okay.
So that, that's the statutory authority here in Tennessee to be able to do that.
Great.
Doing something along that line, we can have some control.
Is that just, is that curiosity, is it that just the name, or is it that particular current logo up there that they could?
Well, it says here, you have the exclusive right to use the corporate name of the city as stated in the charter, any seal, insignia, flag, coat of arms, emblem, sign, logo, or other visual image.
We're good, we're fine.
So we're good.
Great, okay.
Anything else? Are you happy with your progress?
I am, yeah. This has been a great, you know, few weeks.
Is there anything else this group can do to help?
Uh, just the domain purchase and the government meetings, and otherwise I think, you know, I think we're good.
Okay, will you have a calendar by our August agenda meeting or the September agenda meeting?
Um.
You said you're gonna work on the calendar, September, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is the fourth, fourth Friday, fourth Friday in September.
Yeah.
If we could have a set founders week calendar, more solid calendar starting out, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And then we can start sending the letters to folks.
Yeah, yeah, and we recognize the importance of that and the timing, so we're really.
I'm just trying to figure out when it is, not pushing it.
No, that's fine.
Well, well, that's.
Who's the piece of service?
That twenty-second, which would be the normal meeting, I'll be at a team manager's conference, my continuing ad, so it, it may flux one way or the other if council chooses to do so, so just.
Yeah.
Is there a twenty-ninth?
There's a twenty-ninth.
Okay.
We'll look at that, but just wanted to throw that out there, that we may have to have a little adjustment.
How's everybody looking on the twenty-ninth?
September?
Yeah. Let's do it now, because it's hard enough ahead of time, and we won't plan anything over that. You okay? Dick, you okay?
I'm good, yeah.
Nope, I'm in Kentucky.
In fifteen?
Is that too early?
It's too early.
I may be out of town on them.
Fifteen's right after the.
And depending what we, we have on the agenda, there's always the option of having Chief Mitchell sit by stand, so.
So keep it for the twenty-second.
That's why I said.
I'm not sure exactly. All right, hey, we'll keep it for the twenty-second right now, and just as we get closer, depending on the agenda. We're gonna keep it as the twenty-second. We're not gonna move it right now. We were gonna move to the twenty-ninth, because Dan's on a vital law on the twenty-ninth, plus we gotta hear from Amy, who will be here soon. But we'll keep it on the twenty-second. As we get closer, depending on the agenda, we'll may move it. You can be there the twenty-second?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
Works for me.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Please let us know when that website goes live.
Yeah, we will, that's fine. You guys have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Continue.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda is the authorization credit card agreement with SunTrust resolution. I will read that. Resolution number two seventeen dash thirty-four, twenty seventeen dash thirty-four. A resolution by the Signal Mountain Town Council authorizing the town manager and finance director to execute and perform an agreement to enter into a commercial credit card account and to adopt the SunTrust Bank corporate resolution and certificate of incumbency for our commercial credit card account. Free State Four is just our regular, town has credit cards. Who has control of those? Just you and Carol?
Well, that's what I wanted to go into in this situation and give you a background of what necessitated this change. In the past, we've, we've had two cards. One is generally signed out to me, and the other is signed out as needed. So we know who has it and what they're gonna use it for before they get it, as worked pretty well. We've been put on notice that SunTrust will no longer allow that type of scenario with our current plan. They would require any individual that's gonna use a town card to have a town card, and there were some other downsides to making that change within the current plan. They did provide some other options, and this one still requires that. But it is really a better scenario for us. There is, there's zero interest rate on it. The only cost we would have is if there is a late fee, it's one and a half percent of an outstanding balance we pay it every month, so that would, if that were to happen, it would be extremely small. And the only other thing would be an insufficient fund scenario, and we can't set this up, which we are, so that it cannot be used for any cash advance, so therefore there's no opportunity for that. So it is a really good scenario. What we're gonna have to do is issue cards in most departments, the larger departments, the department general will have one, and their second in charge will, will have one.
How many total?
Fourteen.
I think it was fourteen, it's in right in the age of fourteen. Might be one or two besides.
So two per department, generally?
Yes, but some departments will only have one.
Does every department get a toaster?
No, they don't.
That's really old.
I'll take. And, and with the safeguards, we will actually have control over these cards. We can go online and actually, for lack of a better term, kill an account, and so they can't be used. The issue is, they would, in this plan, actually allow us to have a floater card, but if we chose to do that, they give us no protections for fraud, theft, and, and our insurer will only cover us for employee misuse. So we would really be opening ourselves up. With, with the safeguards in place, the way we control it, we can set the limits, we have a ten thousand dollar maximum limit total, so we're, we're looking at small purchases, this really is the best way to go. But I just wanted to fully explain, there is gonna be a change in the way we do it, and we really don't have any choice in that. This is our best scenario.
Wouldn't that help with keeping lines for departmental purchases anyway?
It really doesn't have that much effect. It, it's, the only thing it might help with is if there's a, a charge that couldn't be identified, at least we know whose card gets on there, so.
I want you to understand too, that Boyd and Carol obviously don't trust anybody that's counsel, because basically what they've said is, we can never use a card again, but that's what that's.
Like we could've used a card.
We, yeah, I just, you just have that chaperone.
That's right, exactly.
So that's, and again, it's something we have to make a change, and Carol especially spent a lot of time looking at different options. This, this really is the best one, and there are some upsides to it. We, we will have more cards, but again, with this system, we have very good accountability and record management on it, so we're comfortable with that.
Any conversation? Can we get a, can I get a motion?
Like a motion that we.
Second. Second, we got first and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carry. I signed the one in here, right there?
Yes.
And I don't sign the second page?
That is correct.
What's today, four?
Today, four.
That's the only thing in here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next ordinance. This FY two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget, first reading. And it's the first reading because we've made some significant changes, or not significantly, but some changes.
It's the first reading because we are just now in a position where we have the rate.
We have the rate and everything. All right, will you please give us the overview?
This, really from our last discussion, there's, there's been one change, and it doesn't affect the timeline as far as how this is structured. When we last spoke, we, council agreed to a thirty cent increase. And then mayor suggested that we retain two cents of the tax dedicated to the school. And after that meeting, in looking at that scenario, I met with him and basically asked for a concession in that we, it will still equate to thirty-two cents, but it'll all be general.
Was that a meeting or was that separate from the suggestion?
That was just him and I talked.
Okay, so.
Since, since he was the one that asked to have that two cents on there.
We brought up at the meeting that I was, since we had fifty thousand dollars left on the school bond, and we had a dedicated funding source for that school bond, I didn't want to take on our general funds to do that if we still had the option of a dedicated source, which would save the town fifty thousand dollars on that side. That's the conversation we had. That's what I brought up, I think, at the last agenda meeting, and I think we said, yeah, that makes sense.
So the net effect is we were gonna pay it off early, and we elected not to pay it off early.
Right, out of our funds instead of using the funds that are dedicated for that specific.
I'm sorry, just.
But that's, do you, do you remember that?
Given, given the dynamics of this whole scenario, I, I still feel strongly it is our best interest to retire that. We will pull some funds, approximately sixty thousand, out of general fund to do that, but we will implement that two cents, but just as general revenue tax. So it still equates to thirty-two cents. It just makes it cleaner and easier.
It's so clean that the adjusted rate, less the school bond amount, happens to result in the exact same tax rate as we have right now.
Just a hair below.
Right, so we're actually bringing the current tax rate down by point two percent. That's how close it was. So to me, it made sense to do that.
Something less confusing for everyone involved.
Yeah. Point oh two percent.
I, I wouldn't use that as a.
Yeah, I wouldn't choose.
We're, we're right now.
What is the rate?
Right now, we're at one point five eight. One point five six eight.
Four. One point five six eight four, right, versus the.
As it stands right now, we would be at one point five six six five. So it, right in that.
Hundreds of.
Yes.
Now, that, that's, that's where we are, and really that's the only change. We were still, we're still talking thirty-two cents for this coming, but it's not gonna be separated out. We will account for that here now.
It equates to a thirty-two cent increase, but you have the fifteen cents from the bond coming off. And the assessment equaled about a seventeen percent reduction in the tax rate, so we are keeping the tax rate pretty much where it is, and that gives us the thirty-two cents.
Now, that being said, one of the more difficult things we do in, in budget preparation is, is revenue projections as a whole, but one of the harder ones, which we're not gonna have to deal with much longer, but, is, is the hall tax. We just now got the numbers on hall tax for last year. So when we went through the budget process, we were projecting next year before we even knew what this past year's numbers were, and it's, it's difficult, but we've done a pretty good job of that. And in this case, we did a good job of that, based on the numbers we had and the projections of what the reductions we anticipated. Our numbers were pretty close, would have been, except that when we got notification of the figures, we were also informed that the reevaluation of the distribution resulted in about ninety thousand dollars that would have come to us is instead going to waltz. So that put us about sixty thousand dollars below what was anticipated. That then changes our projection for this coming year. And as you know, when we went through this budget process, it is extremely tight. So this is literally something that's developed in the last week. So before we take up this ordinance, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and that moving forward, we, we know the numbers that we are dependent upon here are, are too high for hall. If we were to address that now, we would, we'd be in a position to, to do that.
We think they are. There is a chance they could come in at that number.
Well, for this past year, we know what they are.
Right.
We're, unless there, there is a chance, if there, if there is a swing in.
Interest rates.
Interest rates and, and, like, people may have a lot more money.
Not necessarily interest rates in the market. The market's been going crazy. We're over twenty-two thousand, so there is a chance.
Well, not necessarily interest, but dividend.
That's right.
Dividend earnings go up. Dividend earnings go up, this will go up, but again, that's why this is such a, it's a moving target.
The market's been going crazy now, so there is a chance, not likely we're gonna hit our mark.
So, knowing going in that we have budgeted extreme, I mean, you guys know the process, we're tied.
With all that said, we have enough reserves, plenty of reserves to cover us if something happens.
We're off by $30,000, then is that the story?
Sixty thousand.
Probably sixty or so. Now, again, with as tight as we are on operational and capital, we always talk about taking funds out of general fund reserves for operational.
Is a no-no.
That's, that's why I wanna have this conversation. We may find ourselves in that position.
Here's my point, we can go back through the budgeting process and kind of rehash that, or we can say, "Hey, you know, we're pretty darned close on the 60." You know, it may, we may be 60 under, we may not, depending how the market continues to go. You know, my gut feeling is, we know where the budget is. If for some reason we're 60 and we're aware of this, it's brought our attention, we're still gonna have general funds to cover it. You know, it's not gonna...
Well, my concern as much is not necessarily on the budget side of things as it is on the tax rate side of things. If we know we're that short...
But you've now added two additional cents of what we agreed to.
No, you, you agreed to 32 total, that's where we were.
We agreed 30 originally, then the two we added because of the whatever, we now put a two in, which is forever, as opposed to just, just for next year. So.
You're correct.
Right.
But again, this, this is a change.
We still have knowledge now that we believe it could possibly, we could possibly have 60,000 less revenue than we thought. What's the penny worth, Carol?
Thirty. It's right, it's just under 30,000 now. It's 29 something.
That's at the new assessment rate.
Yes.
I don't wanna go higher than 32, I really don't.
And to be clear, I'm not...
I know, I know.
I'm making you aware.
You're making us walk right up to the board.
We have set this budget, and we've had discussions relative to the tax rate based on one set of figures. Those figures have changed, so I'm making you aware of that.
Would we not be passing an unbalanced budget with knowledge of the situation? See, I don't agree with that, 'cause it's a what-if. It's a, we budgeted, now we have better numbers, and in some people's mind, to draw us to a better conclusion on the number, I don't necessarily buy that it's gonna be 60,000 less, given where the market's gone, so.
I understand revenue projection is a fool's game.
Right.
The whole budget, we object.
Right, the whole budget.
But.
And you still have the best knowledge, yeah, you have the best knowledge coming to you that you can.
But it still has to be balanced.
Balanced. And, but if we're assuming that 60,000 in there, it is balanced. If we have to make an adjustment during the year, we can make an adjustment there. We have, we're still gonna be at 45 percent reserves after that's next year. Is that...
Am I close? I think that's, as it's currently calculated.
Right. So we are still well over what our reserve requirement is at 27, that we, our local, or state...
Well, but our five...
Ours is 35.
Right.
State requires 27.
They recommend...
They recommend, I think, two or three months, I forget. They don't recommend.
So we have a reserve pot that will continue to be at 45 percent, that we said last year we were gonna try to work down closer to what we're requiring at 35 percent. That 60,000 is not an issue, in my mind. So that's, but I understand where you're coming from, Dick, it's a legitimate argument.
We spent a lot of time.
Right.
Pouring over budget at it in the excruciating detail, thousands of dollars, and trying to find the right, the right place where we could all agree to not address a known deficit, based on the best information we have. I think it's a mistake in attitude toward budget. If someone had come, if the police department had come with a $60,000 proposal, I don't think we would have handled it that same way. If it were justified, we would adjust the budget and put the appropriate tax in there. So that's kind of where I come, I understand your side of the argument, I really do, and I, and I think we are financially very safe and sound. $60,000 one way or another is not gonna kill us, but I don't like the notion of ignoring what we believe is...
But the other option today's solution is, we cut it from expenses somewhere else, which is what I'd rather do than raise taxes, so.
We're already raising taxes, Chris. We're already raising taxes. Everybody's expecting a tax increase.
And to that point, it's, to do it again in a couple of years is a lot harder than to make the town budget work better now.
Yeah.
I mean, and it seems, I was, I thought we should have been asking for three cents more to begin with, so that the, there's a little bit of room in the budget, so that we can maintain services and fix, you know, tennis courts.
I'm just, I am more comfortable addressing this head-on rather than, than not. And I don't mind defending that, if somebody challenges it.
No, that's, and that's fine, I understand. We're making a 32 cent tax increase, it just so happens to equal the same exact rate we've got now, 'cause we have 15 cents dropping off from the school bond, and the reassessment got to you. The probably largest, 32 cents largest in history here, is my guess. It is justified because of loss of hall tax revenue, which this issue directly ties to.
And that's just lost some more approach to hall.
That, yeah, that 30,000 equals the amount we're losing in hall tax, all right? This is a one-time loss for hall tax. There are three ways to now tackle this. You raise, easiest way is raise taxes, all right? The second way is, you reduce expenses somewhere. And the third way is, you dip into general fund, because this is a one-time issue. And I know we don't take general funds for operations, but our commitment a couple of years was to get our general fund from being 100 percent above, you know, 100 percent of the year's budget, down to something more reasonable, which is our rule at 35 percent and the state's rule at 27 percent. So to me, in my mind, those are our three options to fix this.
I agree with your one-time.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not proposing one over the other, but we do have three options to fix this, and it is a one-time issue, so.
Can I clarify one thing, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the increase where, it's on the table now, it's in this budget and the ordinance, covers additional debt service that we're taking on, increased cost of operation, and the loss of hall tax to date. And there's additional loss projected over the next three years? So there, we're already at this point looking at additional revenue shortages or reductions over the next couple of years, so.
And I don't wanna make the point, this is not a one-time loss, this is, this also continued, this is a, this is a loss at this point, that it continues, we will not regain that funds in future years, that's...
Now, and to Chris's point, there's nothing that says we have to change our projections on hall. The way we would generally approach it, that would be to, based on the information we just have, we would, we would reduce our projections. If it's the position of the council, that the market conditions would or could likely offset that, that's, I mean, that's, that's a valid argument, whether it's right or wrong, but another.
So, it wouldn't be my, when we, it's going down this year while the market has been going through the roof, and we just lost some more, and the odds that we are, I'm not saying we're in a bubble, and I'm not Warren Buffett, but the odds that next year is gonna be significantly better, and then the next year significantly better, if this thing continues to step down, I wouldn't trust that.
But you're, you're behind.
I understand that, this is from, but it was also, it was...
Last year, no, no, last, last year, market was only up a couple points, when you balanced everything out. This year, we're up significantly. So it's based on this year's revenue, and that's fine, that's a separate argument, it's not back to the...
We've, we've accounted for the known reduction.
Right.
The step down. What we're talking about is an unknown reduction, because what we had been receiving is now going somewhere else. So that is going to continue. Will that extra 60,000 or so be made up with better revenue? I don't know.
Well, and this being this tight, it just concerns me that going forward, now that, when you're doing it, now's the time to do it, because the next council, and the next council, and the next council, you haven't really solved it if you're just squeaking by. And I don't think that's...
Any...
Yeah, we're, I'm trying to figure out where we're at.
On the, on the tax rate, we're at, we're at 32, as last agreed.
Yes.
That is structureable differently, instead of having two cents dedicated to the school, we're just making it all 32 cents, and we will account for that in-house this coming year, so we're offsetting what we're using to pay off the loan early. So that's just kind of a reorganization of it, it's still at 32. In the last week, we've gotten the numbers from hall. We don't get this past year's until now, so we're projecting next year before we even know what this past year's are, so if, if we had saved one situation, we were good, our projections were good, we may have actually gotten a hair below what we thought. But with reevaluation of the disbursements, about 90,000 that would have come to us going to waltz, which is understandable, because everybody has to send them out addresses, and they do a reevaluation.
Yeah.
So for this past year, we dropped, so the numbers that we would have been working from are lower than what they were. So we're figuring probably about 60,000 less next year than anticipated. The question is, how we, do we, and if so, how we account for that additional lower revenues? One position is that the fact that the market's going up, even though we know there's a reduction in hall, that might offset that extra 60,000, and we're okay. Or if that doesn't happen, we were basically going into this budget knowing that we're, that we were lower on revenue than it is now.
If we wanna correct it, here are three options.
Okay.
And if anybody has an additional option over that, please let me know, but these are the ones I can think of. Are, we look at increasing revenue, and to increase revenue, you need to raise the tax rate even further. We look at reducing to 60,000 in expenses somewhere within the current budget. Or you agree to take that 60,000 out of reserves, of which we're projected to be at 45 percent after next year, which is significantly higher than 35, that is 10 percent higher than 35 percent target we wanted to be at as a council, or the 27.5, I forget what it is.
They don't do a percentage, they do a number of months.
Okay, three months, they do three months. And it's higher than the three months that the state requires, and our 35 percent is higher. So those are really our three options, if we wanna correct it. The argument I put forward is, the hall tax fluctuates every year. There's been years we've got 600,000, there's been years we've had 900, there's been years we've had above a million once, I believe. So it goes up and down. We hit a down year this time. We're 60,000 down. They made a projection, but now, as they usually do, went back and made an additional projection, given the new numbers, 'cause the new numbers have come in. My point was, it's 60, and, so those are our options, I'm gonna take that up to, Dick believes that we should handle it from the revenue side, and I believe, and I believe Dan is there, too. I believe we should handle it, I believe we should let it go, because I don't think we can predict, and I think that this year, the market's been going up, and that's the year we'll get the money. And if not, we can take it out of reserves, which we are absolutely fine, and it will help us get closer to that 35 percent than what we're projected to be at. Or we can go through the process of finding 60,000 in the budget to, to take out of the budget somewhere else.
So option one is higher than 32 cent tax increase?
Yeah. How much do we need? We need, it'd need to be two more cents, 'cause it's 30 cents per penny, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, I know.
You were proposing a 34 tax instead of 32.
I'm suggesting that we address this problem, not depend on manna from heaven. We don't, if we know, if we know we have a two-cent deficit, we address it, we address it on the revenue side or the, or the expenditure side, but we, in my opinion, we have to address it, rather than...
All right, stepping past that, and I agree, how do you propose to address it? What's your proposal?
I'm, I'm saying that, as you said, I would favor a two-cent additional tax.
Okay.
To make it 34 cents.
Sure.
So what, what would we be actually raising taxes this year? From what to what? 'Cause we're not at 32 right now, we just proposed that we would be 32.
It happens, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As, as it works out, again, and that's one reason I wanted to actually drop that 15 off from how we, while we organize the ordinance the way we did. Here's, this is our certified tax rate, we're gonna retire the loan, drop that 15 off, and we're gonna add 32 back on, and we're, we would be at 1.5665, which is a hair below where we are right now.
It's actually about two-hundreds of a percent lower than what our current tax rate is.
No, I know the felt tax rate is, I get all that, I just was trying to...
So the new tax rate would be just slightly lower than what we current, what our current tax rate is.
So, and that's a lot of the confusion, one of the things I always try to make a point of, it's not about the tax rate when you have this conversation, we are raising taxes, the tax rate happens to be about the same because of the reassessment. So just saying that one more time.
Okay.
But that, that's where we are.
So we, I'm sorry, one more time on the, right now, where the tax rate, where it...
Is, the certified tax rate at four digits is 1.3965. From that, we drop the 15, and I'm going by the numbers that are in the document right now. We add the 32, and that puts us at 1.5665.
And previously it was, or what is it right now?
1.5684.
Okay. And Dick, I haven't heard a second, I haven't heard a motion, but Dick wants to go up to 34, and I'm simplifying that, Dick. I just wanna get this on the table, and let's discuss it and make a decision.
If there's a reasonable reduction that covers the $60,000 that we can agree to, I'm not opposed to that either. But I, as, I know as hard as we fought on this budget to get to where we are, to take $60,000 out of it, it's not gonna happen without an extended discussion. And I don't, and to me, that's, that's not the way we do it. I think we need to cover the cost based on what we anticipate the costs are gonna be.
Absolutely fair, absolutely understandable. My preference would be, we leave the numbers as they are, and if it so happens that the hall comes down, we take it out of reserves, getting us closer to this board's goal of 35 percent in reserves.
Now, at the risk of...
No, please, please, that's why we're here, we need to come to the best decision for the town, so.
All opinions. When you talk about getting to the goal of 35, and you talk about, that's where we want, that is said as our minimum.
Right.
That, that's our minimum. So, so being at 45 is not a bad thing, being way up here is problematic, 'cause you're spending...
It's our minimum required by law.
No, 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 27 is our, no, I'm sorry, it's three months is, we're about a seven million, seven million?
Right.
Seven million dollar budget, so what is that, divided by four, help me, Carol?
I just wanna point out that when you say, "Getting to 35," that means, it sounds like we're trying to get to our very minimum.
This is a political difference, and that's fine. I have a, I, I have a strong feeling that if we're holding too much money, we're overtaxing the people. And that's just my political view, opinion. I know everybody would love to have an extra, all this insurance, but I think we are taking people's money if we have too much in reserves. That's just my pure political...
And there was a time when we did.
Right. And we've corrected, we've been correcting.
But we've been working on that.
Absolutely.
The 30,000 that we're talking is operational, is an ongoing cost from year to year to year. And so this, what you're, this 60, I'm sorry, sorry, 60,000, is an ongoing operational cost. And so... And so, it's something that we're going to have to address at some point during the next years.
Unless you take a capital item.
I'm sorry.
Unless you take something off the capital item list, then it's only a one-time.
Well, the capital is coming out of-
Pretty much all the capital can be reasonably accredited to start unbalanced, has been.
The cost of the three million dollars, remind us, refresh me of what we just talked about earlier.
Hundred fourteen.
The fire station is in this budget?
It is budgeted in this budget, yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we make the increase be thirty-four cents.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to increase the tax rate to thirty-four cents. Any further discussion anybody want to talk about?
I think that we, this is my political viewpoint on this thing, that no one's going to be happy that you do it. But kicking things down the road, I don't, for me, that feels irresponsible. We know this is an ongoing thing. And I think as hard as it was to work on our budget, I mean, it's like a lot harder things in life than doing that. However, it certainly was a wrestling match because it was too tight. It's too close for a town of this caliber to be cutting things that tightly. And now, because of the Hall tax reduction, everyone knows we have to do this just to meet the budget. And because we just got hit with another sixty thousand dollars, all we're doing is doing what we said we were going to do to begin with, is covering the Hall tax. And I think to raise taxes now, even though it's not a big FELT tax increase, it's a psychological tax increase. To try to do it again in a year or in two years is, if you're thinking politics then, I think that's politically not very smart to do. I think you just take your beating now and try to do the best thing that you can for the town. So, that's-
I'm not running again, so I don't care about politics. We are increasing and putting in place a permanent tax on something that may be a one-time reduction in revenue that we are even certain it's going to be a reduction because we could very well likely make more than we projected on Hall tax revenue next year. We don't know. And we won't know next year till we get the number. But we're putting something in permanently based on something we don't know. It could be less than sixty thousand.
And you don't ever lower them once we start raising taxes. I mean, we're spending-
So, I cannot support it. So, I'm just saying that.
The thing is, it is Hall tax. This all came because of an additional unexpected reduction in Hall tax. Again, this budget only deals with the reduction in Hall tax today. So, whether we actually feel it this coming year or not, it is going away forever. This just puts us not as far behind the curve in the next two years when we got to try to figure it out.
With the rest of it.
Right. If this was something else, if this was a reduction in some other tax that is going to continue, I would agree with that completely. But this is Hall tax. It's going away forever. This particular instance just equates to a bigger chunk of it leaving before we thought of it. So, that two cents represents sixty thousand dollars that at some point, if we're lucky, we don't feel it this coming year, fine. But at some point, that sixty thousand is gone and it's not coming back.
Well, more than just the sixty.
Right. And then some. And again, I'm not advocating more or less. I'm just trying to make sure the council is aware of the situation. It has changed since our last discussion. And that's, it is just another piece of the Hall tax scenario that we had no indication it was coming.
I struggle with raising taxes on the level two. Bob, I haven't heard from you. What are your thoughts?
Well, you know, I'm like yourself. I don't want to raise taxes unnecessarily in anticipation. I'd rather raise it based on a hard fact. But Boyd puts the screws to the conversation that it's gone anyway. But Chris makes the argument that it's, may or may not be a problem in the future. It's a tough decision to commit on one versus the other. I, you know, like Boyd keeps saying, it is going to be gone next year. So, to some degree, what Dan said, that the, taking the beating now as opposed to asking for another raise on the taxes next year, I'd rather take my medicine now than later. But, I mean, I see both sides of the coin. I don't want to be one that has the biggest tax increase in years.
Well, you're going to be that either anyway, anyway you go.
So, if I'm going to take my hit, I'm going to take it now.
That's very fair. But I got to respond slightly to what Bo said in that, if you take the thirty-two cent increase now and you multiply it by what each penny equates to, that's over nine hundred thousand dollars. We lose nine hundred thousand dollars in the Hall tax. So, we are making up the entire Hall tax in one year. Our budget maybe has grown, and we've seen that it's grown over ten percent each year the last three years. So, we may need more to cover our budget. But my whole reason for increasing was to cover the revenue in the reduction of the Hall tax. And that thirty-two cents does it, in my mind. It creates nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars in additional revenue. That's last I'm going to say about, and I think both sides are very, you know, I understand it, stand and see both sides. So, does anybody else want to comment before we vote on this? And if, well, I'll ask a question afterwards because I don't want to influence-
Well, I see both sides. As well. I tend to err on the more conservative side of maybe this year, taking it out of the reserves. And I just don't want to make a decision of increasing taxes, in my opinion, much higher than what we had discussed, out of fear of what might happen. I mean, I have a fundamental issue with raising taxes anyway, so.
Dan, you have anything else?
But I understand where it comes from.
I have a fundamental issue with not covering our costs. And that's why-
Anything else to add? Dick?
No, I'm ready to go.
Bob? Okay. With no more, do you want, Carol? You're welcome to. Okay. Everybody has commented. The motion is on the table for a thirty-four cent tax increase. Is that, is that what we do or do we vote on it?
Basically, what we're doing now, you're voting on what you want this document to say.
So, this won't count as the first reading. We're going to have to wait till the next term.
You're voting on what you want this to say.
Okay.
We can make that change. And then when you vote on this, you will vote on it as-
So, the only change in that is the actual tax rate?
Correct.
If this goes.
Correct.
Okay. So, we have, just to clarify, we have a motion on the table to increase the tax rate to thirty-four cents to one point five eight eight four. No, one point five eight six five. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Say it again.
One point five eight six five. Tax rate last year, just so everyone knows, was one point five six eight four. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Wait.
Opposed.
Okay, so it's two to three. Motion does not carry. I make a motion that we stick with the thirty-two cents that's in there, which would put the tax rate at one point five six six five.
Well, all you need to do on that is to just go ahead and vote on the ordinance itself because that's the way it says.
And we can deal directly with it.
Okay. So, I just make a motion to approve the, before I do that, because that's kind of finality, is there any way else we can go on this? Anyone else want to talk about this? How do we do this? Okay, I make a motion that we pass this resolution as written.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry.
Read it, caption.
I will. I'm sorry. Ordinance, which doesn't have a number yet because it's the first reading. An ordinance of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, here and after known as the FY 2017-2018 budget ordinance. I make a motion to approve it. Hearing no second.
I'll second it.
Discussion on the ordinance. All right, all those in favor?
No, wait, wait, no, wait. Got a region on the ordinance speed yet? I just think we aren't properly considering the results of what we're doing. We are basically voting for a budget that doesn't balance. And that's something I thought I would never do.
I disagree because all the balance is projection and there's a good chance we could come over the projection of the Hall tax. It's all speculation.
The sixty thousand that we just lost, the ninety thousand that was removed from ours is not speculation. That's something-
That's from last year. That's actual. You're absolutely right.
It's something that physically happened that we have to deal with. And the fact that the Hall tax is going to completely go away is not speculation. That's law. And that's what's going to happen. And other, whether or not we're intending on being on this council for more than two years or four years or whatever, future councils have to deal with the fact that the Hall tax is going to be gone and to start building our budget in direction. Let me finish. Start building the budget in the direction that covers that seems important to me. I'm almost done. And as you mentioned multiple times when we were doing the budget things, you kept looking at twenty percent here and twenty percent here and twenty percent here. We don't anticipate that things are going to cost less. We don't anticipate that it's going to be easier next year, but it's going to be harder next year. And I believe that this is, I, me personally, I feel that it's irresponsible to kick the can down the road like that. I wouldn't do my home budget like that.
Understand. And I believe it's arrogance to believe that you can project exactly what's going to happen. And I think it's arrogance to make a determination for a future council, thinking that you know better than they will at the time.
I ask that we call a question.
I would leave that they leave it to those folks to make the decision at the time. Just my opinion.
Can you confirm that?
Question has been called.
What's the question?
I've asked to call the question. I'm through discussing. If you all are, I'd like to vote on it. It's perfectly okay. I can do that.
I've just never done, so I'm just trying to figure out what I got to do. Just go right to the vote?
Ask.
Just out of curiosity, if somebody wanted to discuss it more, they couldn't, once you call a question? I'm just, I don't want to discuss more. I've just never heard that.
Under Robert's rules, the party can call for the question at any point in time on here. I think that's what he's asked for.
Okay, so that ends all discussion? I've just never seen it. That's interesting.
I'm looking at Robertson. It has to be a two to three vote for a call, call the question.
So, you got to vote to call the question, hurt?
Yes.
You can have a call for the question.
Okay. Who wants to vote on the vote that's, who wants to vote right now on the vote for the ordinance? Is that? Okay.
I'm fine.
I think that works.
All right. That doesn't approve it. Now, we have to vote on the actual ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the ordinance I read and the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No opposed.
Okay. Three to two.
We have anticipation of this process with moving this work session. So, you know, we preemptively advertised the public hearing and everything for the meeting on the fourteenth to meet the timeline. So, we are in position, even though the meetings are close together, we got to advertise at that time. So, we're in a position to have the public hearing, public hearings, and secondly, the meeting on the fourteenth.
All right. Heated discussion. I just want to tell you, I think that was very, a good piece of work. I mean, we disagreed.
Yeah.
But we worked through it.
No, no.
And I'm happy we worked through it.
I appreciate you calling for the question. And nothing in there was personal, Dan or anywhere else.
No, we did what we had.
We had a good discussion and we got to a solution. We all agreed on it. That's what this body is supposed to do. So, nobody, I'm not upsetting anybody. I hope you're not upsetting anybody. But that's, that's what we do. That's what we're paid for.
The flip side of that, we still have some potential unintended consequences of that new fire station and budgeting if we don't get that grant for personnel.
So, we got, oh, we got it.
We did.
That's coming up later. That's good news. Go ahead.
This budget that we're passing, we don't anticipate it. It's possible now, especially with that grant. But personnel costs aren't associated with that at this time. We're looking at, still looking at construction costs and all of that in this next coming year. We may get lucky and have staff ready during this second year, but we give you that grant.
That's great.
Yeah, that's a big.
Yeah, and we were going to talk about it later because, I mean, this is huge. This is over a million dollar grant that we received for funding for a three-year period for our staffing over there. I mean, it is huge. It's one of the, probably the biggest grant this town has had. Could be ever.
The easiest number to run.
Going right to help operational costs. It's phenomenal. Eric should be, we need to throw him a part. But great work by Bo and Eric, Carol and the staff. I mean, I cannot impress how important that is. Discussion MAC Board applications. Does anybody?
Yeah. Barb, I've read this thing. This looks like a very good applicant, somebody that you want to encourage.
I haven't seen it yet, so I'm expecting it from them.
This is the application of Becky Davenport Young.
I got it.
Oh, you got it. Okay. Can I get a motion or?
Well, this is a nomination.
Oh, so it won't go to the next one?
And we will have a resolution prepared at the regular meeting.
Was there anybody else who applied?
This isn't anyone we have.
All right. I make a motion that we accept Becky Davenport Young. Or you did. Did you make the motion?
Yes.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we have any vacancies, Barb? Is this?
One thing, go ahead.
This will fill the only vacancy we currently have. Okay.
What Kyra didn't bring up is we have now a resignation on the Centennial Committee. And therefore, that will be another slot that's open.
Why? Are they not getting along?
Conflict, no. It was conflict with timing on, someone writing a book and needed some more time off.
So, everybody, they're still getting along. Okay. I just want to make sure that's not the section there. What other boards, who knows? What other boards do we still have opening? Do we still have an opening on the REC? We have a rec. Myron, can you get the paper that we have openings for the REC Board and the Centennial Committee? Is that possible? Just a mention in there to help us out? Anywhere else?
We haven't met in a very long time.
Anyone else?
I'll go check in with Myron.
Okay.
We have advertised in the council notes and posted it.
Okay.
We've been interesting of late.
Sorry, Myron, I don't mean to interrupt.
Responses to those positions.
If it's in the council notes, we're fine. That's fine. Ten, Ward Liaison Reports. Dan, you want to go first or?
Myron is off at the summer.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Can you talk about, would you mind sharing what happened at the Planning Commission last night? Because I think it's important for the council to know. I attended, but I think you and Dick are liaisons. So, one of you, if you wouldn't mind hitting that.
Actually, we're members.
Or member, that's, I'm sorry. You're actual voting members.
Makes it kind of interesting. But-
But we found out for sure that there is no conflict of interest. We do not recuse ourselves even when it's coming forward. So, the two main, there are three heightened issues. One is the Coffin Way, potential development. And that one did not come up last night. We've had residents who've shown up here and multiple times concerned about Kentucky Avenue and wanting to get that paved.
Carolina what?
Excuse me, Carolina Avenue. And we voted last night to- And we voted last night to send that to council with some stipulations, but that wouldn't have been ready for coming now, so I don't know that it makes sense for us to talk about that now.
We voted to deny that request.
Yes.
And make that recommendation to Town Council to pave Carolina Avenue as a standard town street.
But did you also, or maybe I missed it, didn't the Planning Commission also suggest that we allow them to pave if they sign a waiver or something, or did you not, did that not get?
I think the question of who suggested what is, is a little murky.
Okay. So it was more they said they didn't feel that this council should pave that street, create, build that road?
The recommendation of Planning Commission to Town Council, because we passed this to Town Council, to Planning Commission for their recommendation, and their recommendation will be to deny that request.
Okay.
Was that unanimous?
Yes, it was. Yeah. Partly, go ahead, I'm stepping on you.
No, no, we both saw the same thing. And I don't know if we didn't rehash it.
You know, was asked to prepare a cost estimate of what it would cost to pave that street according to town standards.
For our spectrum.
Including a cul-de-sac which would be required, and the estimated cost is $123,000 or 300 feet of road.
Well, that's not complete. That's not counting the land that would have to be purchased in order to.
Correct.
Cul-de-sac. So there was land acquisition that wasn't even counted in that.
You mean eminent domain stuff?
Well, you don't know.
If they elected not, but they would still.
Even in the limited domain, there's a cost associated.
No, 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 I understand, but we had to take more than is already there. Okay.
So the cost is substantial.
All right, the other issue.
But that's not, that wasn't the only reason why the request was denied. I think that partly the request is denied more on the question of whether or not the town has an obligation to make, to create roads and streets.
Right.
And what the precedent would set for other areas similar to Carolina Avenue.
And the argument of the citizens basically is that the other areas aren't like Carolina Avenue, that they're rather meek in the number of houses, and again, we don't need to relitigate all that now, but that's, that's what's going on. So I anticipate that there will be a request to the council for some sort of a compromise, assuming the residents are interested in coming to council and saying, if we want to bring this, make it better so it's not eight inches of gravel. Will the council allow us, will the town allow us to do that as long as there's no obligation to repair it if we drive a fire truck down?
The Planning Commission seemed to want to find middle ground in this.
To help, I mean, it's anybody.
And I are going to get that, but they did pass as a part of the, as the recommendation that they are willing, they want to encourage the Town Council to approach the people and find a solution that would be suitable. My position on that was if, that's not our, our role as Town Council to make that aperture, that if they want something from the town, they need to come back. But they did come to the Town Council, and we shunted it over to, and properly, by the way, to Planning Commission. But now it'll come back to us with a recommendation from Planning Commission against, with the cost and our own research, and so now we'll have to make a call.
Will that be on the next meeting?
Well, that's something we really do since this has come up. The council can, they made a recommendation that the council pursue this middle ground scenario and Dick's position, as he says, it's not our position to go to them. If, if they want to pave it as a driveway and all that, they need to bring us, so, no.
Since it hasn't officially come to us yet, can we still make decisions on this, or?
Probably I'll do that at a little meeting with everybody in front of you. I think that's what you can do.
Well, I mean, my only, what I'm saying is, is that a yes or a no?
I think, yes, we need to do it at the next meeting.
Later? Yeah, because we want them to have the opportunity. That's just not fair to them.
I can't imagine that they won't be at the next meeting.
The question is, do we seek them out and actively?
No.
Or do we wait and see if they come and say, can we pay this? That's really the only question.
If they were listening, I mean, I was there last night. That message was fairly loud and clear, and if they come ask, you just tell them?
Then, then we will.
Come ask a question? Right. But we still have to respond to their first request, which is next meeting after we get a suggestion from the Planning Commission that comes up to us and we say no, if, if that's what we vote.
I have the, I have the motion, and maybe.
Let's wait till the next meeting.
Wait until you have meetings that they can be here.
I just, I don't think it's fair to them. Library?
Well, there was a second thing. We, the Planning Commission also, we approved the plat for Danbury with some stipulations.
Okay.
I would like to talk about that for just a second, since.
I agree. I think it was, it was a discussion that used to be public.
Yes. And it's complicated by the fact that I talked to Cliff today about how those ponds are working. And I wish Cliff would have been here last night, because I'm not sure we would have come out the same way. Because Cliff's concerned about how the detention pond is working. And I understand, correct me if I'm not understanding this right, but the builder, the developer becomes the homeowners association for a couple of years, basically. The homeowners association begins to exist almost immediately, and if there are problems with that detention pond, he's treated like the homeowners association and has to make repairs, so that's our insurance for now. And I would say, I guess all I would say, I guess, speaking of the town manager, is we really need to watch that, because it's not working right now.
And like I said last night, I think that's not, and I know Cliff's concerned in the yard kind of this transition period, and one thing we might clear up, too, I think there was some confusion. When they were talking about 85% stabilized.
Right.
That's just grass.
That's grass.
It's not 85% of the houses have been built.
Right.
Any of that. It's, that site has to be 85% stabilized, then it can be converted into work the way it's supposed to work with the detention pond. And the builder, as he works on each individual site, is responsible for that setup.
So. But Cliff believes it should be working as a detention pond right now.
Well, I can't argue.
At least I thought that's what, I might have missed.
I'm just clarifying that 85% of the houses don't have to be built before they start.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that.
That's all.
Didn't he say it was hydroseeding the whole thing? So that should be done.
It should be done pretty.
So it should be done fairly soon, and we'll have an idea if it's working or not.
Right.
And as we said, there is a performance bond at almost $19,000. Other than that pond, the only thing we're dealing with is about maybe 300 feet of sediment.
Are you saying that the seeding is going to slow down the rate of water flow?
Well, once it's stabilized.
It's stabilized.
The pond works two different ways. During construction and when everything's exposed, it basically is made to catch sediment. After that's all stabilized, it's more dealing with the water as opposed to the sediment. Now, that's, that's all I really know.
But, but my understanding, after learning a little bit more about it today, and I still could be misunderstanding it, is that the second part of it, where it has the float, the filtration system that floats, and should be functioning properly now, because it's the first pond, it's the first berm section that filters and catches sediment, and then that goes into the second one that floats, should be working now and taking water down and out of it, and it's not. So something's not working properly, and that's what bothers me. I wish, if I'd known that last night, I would have fought harder. That's a big deal to the neighbors who are right next to there, having water standing in a pond behind their house. You know, they're having to go out there and constantly pump the thing out right now, so. Anyway, I guess that's, we don't have to rehash this all again, but it's really concerning for them, and I'm going to start watching it myself, just as.
Well, Cliff, Cliff has basically walked them through that development from work. And my guess is he will be with them until the last house is built.
He's on them.
Absolutely. And thank goodness, because it has been.
Yes.
It's been a very troubling development.
And he's doing a good job.
Absolutely.
Right.
Now, he and Chuck are the reason that is in this shape and situation.
So he and Chuck will come to us if they're.
And that's the thing, we met yesterday.
And we got a bond.
Though he has concerns, but there was no indication it rose to the level that would have been something to hang your hat off.
Yeah, and I want to give.
Given the fact that there is a performance bond in place, and they have to make it work right.
Sure.
And then after that, it is considered a drainage improvement, so we can require a maintenance bond on top of that. So absent those safeguards, I would agree 100% that maybe we shouldn't have done that. But I understand the concern, but I think we have the controls and safeguards in place that it will be.
When you say we shouldn't have done it, what were you referring to?
Approve the final plat. But I think we're okay there, and, you know, all that was, those safeguards were cut out.
And just to clarify with Cliff, Cliff didn't call me, I didn't call him, I didn't go, Cliff, I gotta learn more about this. I saw him working, and I stopped and said, hey, help me understand this retention pond. So that's the extent of that.
Sure.
Now, is there also, or did you all take care of, is there rezoning of that property behind the shop?
That was not on the, that was not on the agenda.
Okay.
There is a meeting, Wednesday? The night, is that a Wednesday?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, a public meeting hosted by the Keith Corporation. For any interested people, the public, the Planning Commission will obviously be there. But my guess is it will be well attended, and we'll see what they have in mind. Right now, it's very.
Is it here?
No, it's going to be at.
Actually, this.
Yeah, we're going to start here.
Start it here, and then, but it's Wednesday?
That's what I thought it was.
What's the date?
It's Wednesday, the ninth, right?
I was thinking the ninth was the third day, I'm sorry. I had the date right, just the day wrong.
Are there people against this?
Oh, yeah.
Why?
I don't know. We'll see. It's very hard to know at this point, because what has been proposed is so general and so abstract, it's.
Isn't that zoned or future commercial?
No, it's not.
It's not.
It's identified as being an area that could potentially be commercial.
But it's zoned residential.
No, I know, but it's on, you put together your zoning to say, hey, this will eventually be commercial.
It's identified in the land use plan.
Is the land use is future commercial?
Yes.
Potential.
God, if they put, if they put resolution residential, they're going to put 12 houses in there, that's going to be a hell of a lot worse than if they do commercial.
There's many more options than that, though.
We'll see. It's too, it's too early in the game to stake out positions, in my, in my own little opinion, but anyway, we'll see.
Interesting.
We'll hear, we'll hear what they have to say.
What time is that?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. Probably six o'clock.
Five.
Five.
Five. So that's it for the Planning Commission?
Five o'clock.
They didn't have a DRC meeting, so I didn't have anything, and we went over the Centennial, so I didn't have anything.
We tried to get Karen here, but she couldn't answer.
I talked to Dick, I think he's going to get with her for the initial conversation, and then.
You object to that, if I?
No.
Meet with Karen. Okay.
Amy?
REC board hasn't met in quite a while, so not, not much to report, but I know things are going very smoothly with the pool, and there really hasn't been a lot of pushback with the price increase. In fact, people have been like, it's about time. So I thought that was interesting, but.
I'll give that in my next.
Yeah. The Personnel Committee, I don't.
We've tried to get a meeting together to review a job description and just haven't been able to do that, so I sent that out to everybody for their review and comment, and haven't gotten any feedback, so I think we're good.
So you don't have any on it?
No. It's an advisory thing, we just like to have and take a look at it.
I don't want that to hold us up.
We got to, we reviewed it, and we'll look forward.
And then this, the School District Committee, they've canceled the August 2nd meeting, they really didn't have anything on the agenda. There was a survey that went live, I think, two weeks ago, that will target parents, citizens, teachers, and we've had a really great response. I think in the first day, there was over 250 responses, so it's out there.
And is that through the website, or what is that?
You can access it from the Town Hall website, but you can also copy and paste the link, and it's been sent out on emails, it's been sent, you know, social media, so it's, I think it's out there. The budget, we had a budget meeting set up, we canceled that because at our very last meeting, it was suggested that we send the preliminary budget to Hamilton County for further review, even though the state has already looked at the budget and really was within a couple thousand dollars of being accurate, a couple tweaks here and there. So as an added safety measure, Hamilton County has agreed to look at the budget, so we're waiting on that.
So has that happened yet?
To give you, to give you an update, Amy, Amy was, had, had some other things to take care of, so Amy Wakim and myself went to HCD yesterday and sat down with Lee McDade and Christie Jordan, and they, at their request, to answer questions for them, for the budget, as they went through their assessment. And I was just basically there to help support Amy, but Charlie Spencer also came, he asked if he could come, and we said absolutely, but he did not speak at all. He did not talk, he did not, because I told him that was a stipulation if you do come, because we haven't made this, wasn't made a public meeting. Wasn't made a public meeting just because we were answering their questions. They should get back to us with their findings, and I'm sure the budget will have a, the budget folks will have a meeting at that point to address it.
The only other thing I had, and I'm not sure if we've had a work session since this, but one of the big questions I have had along this process has been not, not being able to have Walden and Unincorporated being represented on the school board should this come to fruition. And as a result of the Memphis trip, there has actually been new legislation passed, so there is a way to have Walden and Unincorporated to have representation on the school board. So I thought that was, that was a big source of contention even in here with unanswered questions, so I wanted to report that as well.
And also out of Memphis, some of that same thing was that those students in the specified area by the referendum school board, they can have the same exact preference as town of Signal Mountain students. It's going to be guaranteed.
So.
Is that right? And that was mine.
So the legislation that came out is very recent, you're saying? In regards to that, is that what you're saying?
I don't know if it's recent, or they weren't aware of it. So as far as the timeline, I don't have that information, but it was something that was a result of going to Memphis that they were, the committee was unaware of and were educated about, because that was a big concern that we were seeing in the questions and in the community.
I would not take any of that as gospel until the final report comes out.
Sure.
While we're doing kind of leaking pieces and, and everybody needs to just stay tight till the final report comes out. Which is, when, when do they think they'll have it done?
I think he's looking at about maybe end of September, probably October.
When is your next meeting?
Should be-
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yes.
September or August?
August.
It's the first and third Wednesdays, so sixteen, they canceled the second meeting. Uh, sixteenth would be the next one if it goes. Anything else, Amy?
Okay.
Bob, I'm sorry, as soon as we get done with DRC, what else you have?
I didn't, um, that was a-
What else you represent? You're on board.
Combination board, but I think-
Condemnation, okay.
There wasn't any meeting on that and, um-
Nope, no condemnation.
Construction board. There wasn't any changes in the construction board.
Construction?
Right.
All right. Dick?
I got several things, Chris. Uh, I've gotten a request or an idea from a citizen, and I think it's a good one. Uh, she is concerned as she travels up and down the road, of people crossing over the double line going up and down 127. And she is offering an idea of are putting rumble strips in the double line. I don't know if that's a realistic thing for us to consider, but it, it was, I mean, I've experienced it too. People are racing up and down mountains, so.
Well, we could only do it-
Well, I'm not sure we could do it.
In the town of Signal, I mean, if we were to do it, we could only do it on the town. I'm assuming it'd have to be T-Dot or whoever. I'm not even sure, it's 127, it's not ours.
I think T-Dot has the control that it is.
But we could make a request.
Whether they would do it or we'll leak.
Okay.
But I think it's a, it's a reasonable suggestion.
I mean, that's a reasonable idea.
Can I add on to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
With one of the things I was gonna hit. I've made some significant progress last week in getting contact. Corker's office helped me, uh, to some folks in the Hazlen administration. And they got me to, uh, the number two at T-Dot. His name, I believe, was Paul Degges, D-E-G-G-E-S. Uh, I had a very nice conversation with him. We went over the history of T-Dot and Signal, what they've had proposed as far as road fixes, you know, previously, 20 years ago, one was 114 million, one was like 80 million, and the other was 15 to 20 million. And he went over those three options. He talked about the relationship and how basically they just kind of took their football and money and went home because everybody was, yeah. I'm about to say the B word, now I gotta think of something else that-
We rejected their proposal.
Right, there you go. Sorry. And, um, it was a great conversation. He was very accommodating. And we got to the point where he said, look, we have some plans on the books. I'll come there with my team in the fall and we'll make a presentation to you on potential options and try, try to do what we can to help you get on the list. Not only a list for, for, for this, but a list for funding as well. So I have them, it's yet to be scheduled, have them coming and we will have a special meeting, just, which is just that, uh, to hear what they have to say regarding the roads. But I told them, we have open arms and we can't wait to get here. We explained that we've been sending letters with pictures to Senator Tracy, to Hazlen, that Bo was able to handle, hand it to the government and that this is one of our huge concerns and this, you know, that we really need to do something to address the citizens who continue. That would be the perfect time then to ask them for that, because they are currently doing, um, that in there.
Rumble strips are currently on the edges and they are affecting people that, you know, on the edges.
I've never even heard of them.
They're on the side of town.
Yeah, I've never even heard of them being in the center.
I haven't either.
I've seen it in a few places.
It's a good idea. I mean, I've had experience with people. Okay, next, next item. I'll try to slip along. I just want to relate a very disappointing, uh, event. I've been encouraging my daughter and granddaughter to go down to Rainbow Lake to enjoy the trails and the, the nature, uh, that is available down there. And so they took me up on it and came back with a report that Rainbow Lake was, in Kelly's words, was trashed. Uh, this, Bo was on vacation. So I called Jared and I said, please go down there and take some pictures, let me know what you find. And he came back confirming that report, that we had had, I don't know if it was vandalism or whether it was just, whatever it was, but it's, it's, it's just really makes me mad to, to go to all the trouble to create an environment that 98% of the people enjoy. And then, and I don't know how many is involved, but, but we can't afford to-
What do you mean by trashed?
Yeah, what happened?
Beer cans, liquor bottles, trash, fires, all done at Rainbow.
It, it looked like there, and, and that's something that from the pictures I saw, we would have heard about.
He was on a cycle, he would have picked it up and gone.
It is something that, it wasn't a matter of, of a long period of time and accumulation. This, this was-
Somebody had a party.
Somebody had a party.
Something happened and there were, they left some partial campsites up, tarred, strung up, I mean, garbage, trash, some, they, I don't know if it was a party, a group of people, what, but they, they left it amass. That was the first report we had of it and went and took care of immediately. But that, that doesn't change the fact that it happened. But we would have known about it if, far before it got to that point, if, if it was a, an accumulation of things. It, it was, there was something major going on down there.
We have in last year's budget and the upcoming budget, uh, two officers that randomly patrol the trails. Uh, is Rainbow Lake in Town of Signal? Okay, so that's, that's in it. So we're, we're paying for that to happen. So the Bo's point eventually would have. Who then is responsible for cleaning up?
Jared and his staff.
Would be responsible. Ours is, uh, for cleaning up the conservation easement area?
Oh, yeah. We still, we still maintain it.
Okay. Do they have a set schedule to do that? Or is it just whenever it's needed?
They, they go down fairly regularly. I certainly wouldn't say it's a set schedule.
Okay.
And, and a lot of it is, um, interaction with citizens and stuff. They, they just know about things, they go straight down, deal with it. Otherwise, they, they get down there periodically and check things.
I didn't, I didn't bring it to this table to, to, to suggest that Jared should have gotten it sorted. That's not, that's not a suggestion at all. But it is very disappointing that-
Yeah, it is. And we've got people from out of town coming. I just want to make sure staff is comfortable with what we have in place. Anyway, that was, uh-
Well, now, an event like that, there's, there've been a lot of parking that evening or I'm, I'm just kind of curious what would have led up to-
Jared said, when he, when he called me back, bless his heart, he did, and he said, it looks like somebody's been living down there.
Well, you know, we have, or used to have, our cave dwelling resident. And I've got pictures of that. And literally, there are beer cans that go in Prentice Cooper to a point in three different areas above my head. Now, if a big gully washer had gotten that and put it into the creek and brought it down there-
This wasn't that, and, and I think the point Jared was making, you look at it and the way the, you know, the tent or whatever is, it does kind of look like somebody's kind of, like, let her come squat in there for, for a period of time and, and live there. But then when you look at it in totality, you think about where it is and how many people are down there. I, I just don't, I don't think that's-
My daughter just hit it.
Yeah, the remnants look like somebody's been living there for a while, but that, I, I can't imagine if that would happen and we would have known about it right after that.
The good, the good part, there's nothing good about that situation. But the good part about the work the Parks Board has done, which I represent, is we've already passed the rules that give the police the ability to enforce that. Where those weren't, you know, the force is kind of, please don't do this, please don't do this. We put in, they put in place, they'll finalize, where the police, if they catch those folks or we, even if we learn about who they are afterwards, they can do something about it.
Can I, can I raise a possible solution to this thing?
Sure.
It's not, not that this one just happened, because you're always going to have stuff that happens. But one of our lists of things that we want to do at the community forum is, and this is suggestions from citizens who are bikers and runners, have brought this up to a few people saying, hey, we would like to organize. The people, there are people who run those trails every day, you know, the guy across the street from me, another one down the street, another folks, and they see this stuff on a regular basis. And so they are interested, from a citizen standpoint, organizing something so that people know what the state is. And so it's, it's probably another month or two away before we get to have that meeting, because we have some other stuff we want to do prior to that. But if we can organize-
It looks like we're gonna have, either do that, or if we're gonna maintain it the way we would like it to be maintained, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to incur the cost to do that.
Yeah, we'll raise our taxes a little bit more to do that.
Exactly.
You know, the other thing we could do, though, is, is publicize almost, you know, a number or somewhere where citizens, if, if they're running, biking-
That's an idea.
Down there, call this number right away, uh, to allow us to, to do something, to help, so citizens help us police it. Or is that what you're-
It is kind of that. It sort of all goes through Sam right now. You know, Sam's number will be down there. But these, these guys love Sam, they sort of worship him.
Oh, yeah.
But they want, you know-
They should be.
They're, they're young and they're running and they're out there all the time. They're going, and they're, they're doing most of the trail repairs these days. For the most part, these are people who've only lived in Signal three or four years. It's just they've moved here for that reason.
We'll have to incorporate them into the party word activity somehow.
We should have flyers and, and signs right where the parking is in Ohio Street as you enter that thing, that they can take them. If you see anything going wrong down here, call this number.
Exactly.
Uh, I'm gonna pass along with, this, the, uh, the beautification committee did meet. They asked me to pass this. This is, I meant to do that earlier. That's the recommendation on Coolidge Park. And they are looking at fall approaching and fall is a good time to, to do that. And they, they had their mulch idea in there about how to have weedless mulch. And they would like to cut back some of the trees around the Coolidge Monument to reveal it more so that people can. Right now, it's, it's kind of obscured because of all the shade. And just dress up the Coolidge Park, the entrance to the, to the, uh, to the town. And then they're also, they will come to us, not too distant future, to make a proposal on the Adam Square to enhance the holiday decorations to supplement the train there at James Park. So they've been active and they're, they're a good old group. I'm really impressed with what they're doing.
I saw them at that park the other day, two days ago, they were just-
They have some great, they have some great ideas. They're, they're really good and they're, they're meeting faithfully. I want to read something to you, the last thing. And this is why I'm, I'm making the suggestions on design standards. I'm gonna read from you, not extensively, just out of the town code. And it says, scale and proportion of building elements. And it says, buildings and structures shall be designed based on accepted architectural principles for scale, mass, rhythm, and proportion. The height, width, and proportions of a building should create a pleasing visual experience with the other buildings and open spaces in the immediate vicinity. The height and width of roofs should project beyond the facade. Plant, flat roofs are discouraged, but if flat roofs are used, a quality cornice line shall be used. Building elements such as doors, windows, and other openings shall have a scale and proportions that are in harmony with a building, yet create a strong human scale. Now, I don't take exception to anything that I just read. But I have a hard time with that language and ordinance trying to enforce standards. And what I'm, what I'm advocating is this language be upgraded dramatically to include ways to, to give people direction and guidance on what, what, what we require buildings to look like and be like in order to be consistent with what we call our community. And I go back to the land use plan. It's, we, we call ourselves a small woodland community. And that suggests a certain type of architecture. And it doesn't have to be this narrow. It can be wide, or as wide as we want it to be, I guess. But we can decide colors, we can decide materials, we can design. And that's, that's where I'm going with this proposal with, with Karen. And I just wanted to give you a gist of what, what the code says and so that you know how abstract it is. So there we are.
I want to go on record as saying, I think this is a great idea. I, I, my problem previously with the DRC was folks would, who want to start a business or run a business, excuse me, would go through that and prepare something and bring it. And they were like, you know, I don't like the type size, or I don't like the color sign, or I don't like this color. That is not what we're saying here. What we're saying here is if I'm a business owner, I'm starting a business, I'll look at the codes and I'll, I'll, I want to prepare something that's going to be appealing to that community and I'll live by what the codes are. What I don't want is to go in with it and then, then start taking it apart as long as I meet the codes. So if we have it in the codes, I think this is a good thing for businesses. It gives them the right direction. And I want to, I just, I fully support, uh, Dick in this effort because I think it's an important thing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually try to take it a step further when it's my chance to come.
Okay. I, I don't think, I did the rumble strip thing, I did the, and I'm through. I just wanted to let you know where I am on this.
I think it's great.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? I want to piggyback on that since we're talking about it, because I have, unfortunately, I have several issues I want to talk about, but since we're on this one. In addition to that, this council in 2013 created the position of AHO, which is Administrative Hearing Officer. What an administrative hearing officer does is, uh, helps the town enforce, um, our rules and regulations, especially of appearance in commercial districts. All right? So, and, and since 2013, Charlie Potts has been our AHO. Now, I, I tried to meet with Charlie, I was out of town, he was out of town, so we haven't gotten together. And I'm gonna-
And he wasn't at, at Planning Commission last night.
He wasn't at the Planning Commission last night, which I stopped by too. Uh, but we'll get together in the next few weeks. But I was trying to figure out a way to tie with the centennial to try to bring some more consistency to our commercial appeal down the Commercial Strip. And another thing we came up with, and this was really Phil's, uh, Phil's idea, as I walked him down the path of a legal way to do this, is I said, I'd like to bring to the council and say, hey, pushing Dick's idea even further, is there something, a program where we can take the folks that are already in place and give them some sort of incentive to upgrade the look, the front, the facade of their property as you're going through this portion, at this area. What we could do, and I don't want to start costing the town a ton of money, and it's not, not a giveaway, but in a pilot program, we could give those folks tax incentives if you were to spend a minimum amount to fix up the front of your, uh, building, to have this sort of color, you know, wood, green, brick, stone, whatever, whatever we come up with in this. But you basically say, hey, pilot is, uh-
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you. Payment in lieu of taxes. So what they say is, we're going to do $50,000 worth of improvements to the, take the purple and yellow shopping center, for example.
Good example.
Yeah. We're gonna do $50,000 worth of facade improvements. We're gonna make it stone and wood and have this sort of same kind of look in here. And we'll give you verification that we spent $50,000 on it. And in return, through a pilot program, the town sets up something where they say, well, you get two years' worth of free tax. Your taxes basically go to you to help fund that $50,000. It's incentive from the town to make that happen. All right? I would like us to have further discussion on something like that, because I think that is something we could start now. And by the time the centennial comes around, we may be well on our way to creating that look and feel. You know, this is already a great town. I think they're taking it one step further.
I, I do think we want to make a concerted effort to try to dress it up for the centennial. I think, I mean, we've had that conversation here. And I, and I think that as it approaches, I think they'll get the excitement building. But I think we want to be on our, at the top of our game.
Do you agree with the, taking a step farther with the pilot thing?
If, if we can swing it financially, sure.
Okay. What, what we are gonna require, if we're gonna pursue that, though, is for that to get done first and quickly. Not, not quickly to the point where-
I understand, yes.
It needs to come to us in the next couple of months so we can start developing a pilot program that this council can vote on. We, we, we need, we need standards that are, that are clear.
That's why we wanted Karen here, understood she couldn't be here.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Karen and see if we can come up with something.
If we can't make that happen, I think it allows us to walk into these next steps.
Can I?
Please.
Okay. I, I agree wholeheartedly and have been thinking that for years since living up here. My question centers around like, so if we, if we go that step further, and it may be more a question for you, like, how far can we, I don't know if you guys, I, I've been training a lot, so I've been in North Chattanooga a ton. And they have completely revitalized all of their storefronts, that old CVS where Charlotte's Web is, I have it pulled up on my phone if you want to see it. I mean, they totally, I have to figure these out, um, modernized it. And it was, you know, just a basic CVS, but now it looks, it's all uniform. They've got neat lights that come out. So my, my question is, can we, um, I don't know, the proper word would be required, but can we, can we tell them? Because if each shop is getting an incentive and they're doing it their own way, we're losing that. We, we want it to be uniform and modern and up to date and-
Well, that's what those, that's why it's important to have changes in that even first before you set the pilot, because then you point to that and say, this is, to be eligible for this, you have to use wood and stone on your facade and it has to be these five colors. So, yes.
Okay, so that, that was my question. We could really have a little more-
I was trying to figure-
Input in that. I think that would just completely change the look.
And I, I was looking at it at a totally wrong way. And I'll give Phil total credit for this, because I'm saying, how can we use an AHO to force people to do this instead of let's incent people to do this? So I was, I needed to get rid of my stick.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Phil.
And I think we are also, we're looking at, are we looking at code review and, and which will address land, does that, that's not landscaping, but it is maintenance of yards and that kind of thing, right?
Right. One of, one of the things that we haven't done in the past is adopt the, um, property maintenance code. And we have some things in our code, but that's lacking in terms of being able to effectively and uniformly enforce itself. Um, we'll be looking at adopting newer building codes, electric codes and all of that. And in that process, they're recommending that we do consider adopting the property maintenance code as well.
Yeah, good.
So we will be in a better position to address those things.
Okay. So that, all of these things kind of tie in and we tighten up requirements. And I, and I'm not suggesting we go overboard, you know, and-
Yeah, I'm a little more-
But, but I think where, there's a place in the, in the sweet spot where we can be.
I'm a little more reserved on and cautious on imposing something on residents. It's just-
This, this is all commercial. Everything that's been discussed- Everything that's been discussed-
Commercial, I'm fine because I believe as, as a businessman or a business, as long as I have the rules ahead of time, I'll live by them. You can't change them on me halfway.
It's worked, it's worked for the signs. Okay? And, and it's no reason why it can't work for buildings.
I, I, this is something that would have such a positive impact for years and years to come. I mean, this, this would be just phenomenal.
I agree. And I'm going to bring this up to Planning Commission as we continue to talk.
Excellent. Thank you, Dick. Thank you for that number, or for that, for that idea.
What else you got?
No, I've got it, Tom. Sorry.
Okay. Make it quick. No, I'm sorry. Well, I'm ready. I'm ready.
So everybody knows Wild Bridge, I want to, I just want to prep everybody on this. Can I? Or have you brought it up?
Nope. Know exactly what you're going to say, so.
Wild Bridge. Wild, Wild Bridge has been around for two years and after two years of development terms, the roads over to the town and then the town takes possession of them. There is, this will be at the next meeting, right? Or not?
Hopefully.
Okay. We've got an issue where an agreement was, would you prefer I not hit this now?
No, I mean, you can just-
Yeah, please. I just want to prep them in case you-
When, when we, a development is undertaken, we enter into a, a development agreement with the developer. And in that agreement, it states that they provide a warranty bond and are responsible for the roads for two years after we accept them. This is in conflict with the subdivision regulations, which basically would say they're responsible for them for two years after construction. We inspect them, we make sure that they're built properly, they're responsible for them for two years. At the end of that two years, they become ours. So the conflict between these two documents would indicate that they, they've been responsible for them for two years and now they're going to be responsible for another two years, which is not, as we've ever done and it's not so. We need to do an amendment to the development agreement to change that language. At that point, we're in a position to do a resolution, bring it to council, and the acceptance of those roads requires action by resolution of the council. So we're in a position that we normally would be ready to do that, we just have to clean up the development agreement language.
So assuming that you're probably going to write that up and then we'll vote on that at some point, can you make a note to make sure that Cheryl gets that so that that's also, we need to talk about that sort of thing at Planning Commission so everyone understands what's going on because-
And, and-
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
We touched on it last night.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But this doesn't need to go to Planning Commission.
No, 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 no. It's just a, Dan and I believe that-
Just an FYI, which is fine.
The Planning Commission and the town council lot operate in silos. We, there's not enough crossover.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think we need to work towards getting that, well, as a better communication.
Yeah. And sorry, I'm not changing, but this is touching just briefly on what you did before. That KCRW study that sits on the town website-
Right.
That we paid $25,000 for 2011, it's, it's six or seven years old. We know the study, the town paid for a study, lots of citizen input on commercial buildings and what they should look like, what a good look and feel is for Signal Mountain. And it has many of the things that you were talking about. We've already paid for and have suggestions and things that we would like to-
Review sent us a-
Yeah.
As a probably a basis for going forward.
So yeah, and that's what I'm saying, there's a silo. If I, I, I had no idea that existed and I don't think anybody else in the Planning Commission did either. And we were talking about this and someone brought it to my attention, so I think, the more we can communicate, the better. Okay. Anything else on that?
Nope.
I have talked with Bill Trowhannis, the mayor of Waldo, and this, you know, the SSPC has been going on. And I feel strongly that we need to protect Waldo in case this thing moves forward. So I told him I'd be willing to work on an interlocal agreement that I've asked Phil to work on, that made sure that if this does go forward, given their contribution to the school bond, given, you know, we're, we need to take care of those folks, that we put an interlocal agreement that would only kick in if the school district was voted in up here. And it basically protects them that their students would be first, you know, same, same level as Signal students in going to the school and would protect them that they, that their schools, their kids could go to the school and that they'd be protected on the first level as treated the same as Signal students. I just, to me, that was important to protect them and give them that assurance because they, because of, you know, they're really in there with us donating 2.7 million and everything. It would only kick in if a referendum, referendum was passed to create the school district. But to me, it gives them the insurance policy that, that, that they would feel more comfortable with. Because I, I don't know where this is going to go. I mean, it could die. On that side, I had a, on that same topic, I had a very nice meeting with Dr. Johnson last Friday, just a 101. Very, very neat guy. I think he has a lot of energy, I think he's going to do well. And I committed to him that once the report's out, that I'd sit down with him again and just go over the findings of the report. But I wanted to make you aware of those two things because this, this board would have to vote on that interlocal agreement before. But I'm not prepared to bring it to this, this council yet. I want to pass it by Bill and make sure he's comfortable with it.
I do have a question.
Sure.
In the paper this morning, there was a report, is it Uni, that's not right.
Unified Ed.
Unified Ed, yes. Who has done an extensive, or is in the process of doing an extensive study in their mind about Hamilton County Board of Education. My, I'm just curious. Obviously, we're not the only ones that are going down this path of research and analysis. Have they reached now that all?
Yes.
To, to me.
To you.
I've talked to Unified Ed folks and they've shown up at about every meeting. And they also presented along the community forums.
I have not talked to them, but I've seen them at the meetings, but they never accept me here.
And I attended their gathering, it may fly. I think they had a couple gatherings up here.
I went to the one at El Matate.
Just curious, I just, you know, with-
What is their mission?
I'm not sure.
I think it's, I think their mission is to ensure that districts have proper funding and equitable funding for all students. They're funded by Lindhurst.
Yeah, by Lindhurst, yeah.
Probably on a grant. And they have an extension for a couple of years.
You have, you have that and then you have Public Education Foundation that, that is probably, I mean, there, there's a lot of, a lot of folks looking at public education right now.
Absolutely, yeah. They work closely, they work closely with them too. I mean, they, they're citizens. I would say, based on, on talking to them, that their mission is to get people involved in holding everyone's feet to the fire. As much public information and acknowledgement, I mean, to make the school system better. We had about, I think we had about 30 people or so for that, for that one, so.
We only had about six or seven. But I mean, I think, I think everybody we've met and who's been involved in this, this project, number one, I think it's a fascinating project and I've learned a tremendous amount. I think it could do nothing but help us understand educational needs, not only for our kids, but all. But, you know, part of what Dr. Johnson and I talked about, if this doesn't go any farther, at least you have some sort of roadmap that may give you some suggestions that, that apply to all of Hamilton County. But we committed to working, working together and keeping an open lines of communication. I very much enjoyed him. I think he, he is a very good communicator, very dynamic guy. I think he's going to do a great job. But I wanted to make you aware of the interlocal because it may be coming here. Also want to remind you again, if you haven't seen it, please look at the Country Club Leaks because at some point we are going to vote on it.
We haven't, we haven't actually got numbers on that. We just have the lease without numbers.
I have one with the numbers, I think. We have one with the numbers.
Our, my understanding, our current numbers is what, are what we'll be using because we had the assessment done very recently. So the next time there's assessment done, we'll have it be done, but we will have the current numbers, I can get those to you.
Okay. I thought that what you sent me was without numbers and you said the numbers were still coming.
The agreement doesn't have the numbers in there yet. The numbers I think we will use will likely be what we have because that was very recently that we had the assessor do that. You know, if the consensus says we need to ask them to do it again, we can do that. But the thing we're, the main thing we're waiting on right now is that Phil, there's an actual legal description to be put in there and that's going to be fairly expensive. So we're, as soon as this budget gets in place, we'll be in a position to have that done.
When, when are we voting on this? When do we need to have-
Well, I have my goal to, to get this done by last April. And this has been going on now for three years.
All right. New goal is when?
Uh, new goal would be as soon as the survey is done, we'd do it. So that's why I want everybody prepared, it's going to come to us, maybe even in the agenda meeting where we need to vote on it.
Okay.
Because they have to do their budget. You know, this is, they are a great community partner. I think they're second or third or maybe even first in the amount of sales tax we receive. I just, this is something that needs to get done and, and needs to just get off our plate, in my opinion. So if you don't have an agreement, please get it and ask any questions ahead of time. We talked about pilot AHO. I talked about T-DOT and them coming in and I'm, I'm waiting for a call. They're supposed to get me in contact with T-DECK as well, who has to do with the WWT, but I'm putting that on hold a little bit. Last thing I want to say is, I attended, I came in and watched our judge that we appointed, Tracy Cox, running court the other night. And I've talked to the police force and some of the officers and Mike and Eric, and she is doing an absolutely fabulous job. And, and everybody is, especially Mike and the police force are very-
Excuse me.
With how she's handling things. So I want, I just wanted this council to know that I think it was a very tough decision. I think we had a lot of great candidates picked from, but the one we did pick, I think she's doing an excellent job.
I'll have to say, I'm not surprised.
Yeah. I mean, she's just, she's her. That's all I have for right now. Anybody else have anything? Managers, boy, we skipped right over other business, managers report, I'm sorry.
We, we covered quite a bit that I was going to touch on. Meeting for Key Corporation next Wednesday. Also in conjunction with that, I should be back in place, but that same day, I'll be in Whipple. They have a fairly new city manager there. They're in the process of hiring a police chief and he's asked me to help him with that, that process so that next Wednesday I'll be over there.
What time is the Key?
It's about 5:00.
5:00 PM and it's here in this room.
Correct.
All right.
The fire station is out for bid. We're continuing to work on details on how we will handle the sanitary sewer system. We have options. We met today, the reason I was late for the meeting, met with county groundwater protection and one of the state soil scientists on site. And I've learned in these projects between roads and public work buildings and all of that to guard against optimism. So I will only say that I'm guardily optimistic that we have a very good option. We, there are a few options for this. It looks like one of the best ones may work out, so we're continuing to work on that. So that, that's good, but it, it is out the bed. There, there, in the estimates, there are good figures in there for this part of the project, so it has not been, not considered. And if things go as they appear, we will be in a very good position in that regard. So as early as the next meeting, the 14th, we, we may be in a position to bring a recommendation to award that contract for construction. So things are moving very well. And we did bring up the grant for the fire personnel that was awarded in full. It is over a million dollars, but our portion of that increases over the period of time, but the grant amount that we will be receiving will be around $900,000. So it is, is huge. And that will help cover the staffing almost completely right out of the gate. And then over the next two years, it, it comes down, but it'll be a huge help. So we're actually going to ask them for an extension in that generally they ask you to have the positions filled within 120 days. Given the fact that we're building a station for these folks, we're going to ask for an extension to that. But the, we've already talked about our current facility and how we can accommodate. We would certainly like to have them in place and in position before we're ready to staff that station so that they've had time to acclimate, be onboard. So it, it looks like, we're, we're actually asking them to give us a little time and not start as quickly as we want. You know, let us hire maybe another 60 to 90 days after that mark so that we're closer to when the building is going to be ready. But, you know, it's one of those things, worst case scenario, we still have staff in place and we'll be able to, to field an additional engine company.
And that's nine, that's nine, nine?
It's nine total staff for three more per shift. So that, that is another piece of apparatus that we can, we can put in field. If at the beginning, that's all still out of this same station, that's the way it works. But when that station opens, it looks like we will be in a position to put people and apparatus in it and open the doors and operate it.
What does that do for your ISO? Pardon? What does that do for your ISO?
We expect, in our last rating, we, we dropped to a three or improved to a three. We were a few tenths of a point away from two. We fully anticipate that when we open that station, we will easily get a full two. It's one of the few times that the fire department will call ISO and say, hey, can you come right there? And we intend to do that.
Which reduces our annual insurance by approximately what?
It, it varies.
$6,000?
No, it's a pretty, it's a huge, it's actually a very big number, isn't it?
Yes.
From a three to a two is probably not a huge difference. Where it really comes into play are those areas where we've annexed.
Right.
And they've come in and always make the point to say this, we have excellent volunteer fire department on the mountain, but it's a volunteer fire department. So for myself included, as I was annexed, the difference over the course of these few years, when I've gone from that to a full time, I think we were at a five, now we're at a three, we're probably going to a two. Over the course of the last few years, been tremendous, tremendous improvement.
Which is a tremendous savings.
To homeowners.
Yes.
That should be a big difference-
Not only to the homeowners, but-
In the town and outside the town.
Not only to the homeowners, but the town's cost of insurance goes down significantly due to it. So, what else you got?
That's big. I had a meeting this morning with Barbara Chapman. She had, reached out and asked to be able to speak with me. And she has a desire, you could more pass for them, to look at the possibility of continued utilization of the portion of the map that is the cafeteria and the two rooms outside of that. We discussed that, I went through the history, told her that that portion of the building has been discussed. We looked at a myriad of options on how to approach this and that, you know, where the council ended up and how we are moving forward. But I also told her that it's my finding that the council is always open to hear concerns or thoughts and that I would convey this to you. And she has asked about the possibility of coming to the next work session to discuss it. And in the meantime, she is going to try to look at what costs might be associated with this. Barbara said she was a sister with that, given the DNA figures and all of that. So that was the conversation. So that was the conversation. Again, tried to explain to her how we got to the point we are, how we're progressing, what would be involved in changing that direction. But told her that I would convey this information, and her request that she be able to come to the next work session and have a, have a discussion, whatever that is like.
She is a very nice lady. Her husband is on the board. She is not on the board, but her husband, Ed, is on the board. They are relatively new to Signal Mountain. You may remember them, because they came to us asking about traffic noise on Tab Highway.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Very nice people.
Very nice people. Very moved in here and have, you know, they've adopted Signal Mountain, obviously, they're home, they've, you know, they're both, so they are, they are very involved. They are artsy family. Nathan Bell is their son-in-law. And if you know Nathan, he's an artist of growing reputation, I might add. So I would encourage us to have her come in here and listen to what she has to say. She probably has a good idea of anything we can do to speed the MAC project along. The theater is now out of commission for two years.
Two years?
Yes, Cal.
That's how long it takes to fix that whole?
And it's just...
No.
No, it's, it's...
It has been out of point.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I know that. I thought you meant it was going to take two years.
And no, and it is just, the theater is the nerve center of that whole operation there. With all due respect to Barbara, who is also a nerve center, but this theater is where the action is, in terms of what people feel and sense about that. And the longer it sits, the more, more it gets. So the board is asking, anything we can do to speed that up?
Have your repairs started?
What are some of the things, Bob, that we could do to speed it up?
I'm sorry?
What?
We're, the plans have been, as I understand it at this point, if the new plans have not been, they are about to be sent to the state for approval. Once that happens, then we're in a position to put the bid documents together and bid it out.
Best-case scenario?
Ed said, Ed Garby said he was going to do that next week, and I have not, I've been busy.
That was my understanding. They were, they were literally on the way out the door to the state, with that conversation with the state. They have allowed us to provide two sets of plans, alternates, to see what would be the best and most cost-effective way to do this. So we're in a position that when we get that review back, we should very quickly be able to get it out to bid.
As soon as, as soon as we can get that theater back in operation.
That will be the beginning of the work, and I will see to that.
All right. I'm through.
So on this subject, just know that there's, there's effort underway to put a 501(c)(3) together.
That was my question. Does this affect that?
Well, it all affects, everything affects everything, and so we're going to, as, it's my only fear about Ms. Chapman, starting something rolling in a direction where there's more important...
I did explain that, that there was an effort to sort of 501(c)(3) that might be more functionally involved with the operation of the center, and she seemed to have a leaning towards a 501(c)(3) that would just be a fundraising entity.
That's kind of what, that's more of what the leaning is of the 501(c)(3).
Do you mind reaching out to her and see if you can bring her?
It's all right.
In the fold, or?
I think some of this stuff was put into motion as people were talking to each other.
That way, you can tell us if you agree or disagree with what's, what's going on. Barbara, have you read this?
Yes.
And you're, you're...
Okay. I'm going to have to make a conference call, because...
Okay. See you, Bob.
Yeah, I'm not trying to slow down or speed it up or anything. I'm just saying that there's multiple moving parts here.
Yeah, there's stuff stirring.
We have to let that, see how it works. We have to let it work out. Anything else? One last thing for me. Anybody else have anything?
I have, I have just a short thing. Like, and I've been in my head a lot about bringing this up, but I'll, I'll just be brief. I've been a little bit out of commission, that a dear friend passed away, so you may be, Dan, you've already done this, but I had asked the council through email to send me the emails regarding the SSBC, and I asked you for a specific email. You may have already sent it to me.
That email does not exist. You've asked for something that doesn't exist.
So no one emailed you about me calling someone a conspiracy theorist?
No, that was a personal conversation with a human being.
Okay.
Yes. So, and I thought I made that clear a couple of times, that you're asking for stuff that doesn't exist.
Well, you've...
I haven't answered any questions. There were questions to the SSBC. I've answered questions about the process, and I'm not going to share those unless everybody shares their stuff. I'm happy to.
Everybody has shared their stuff. That's my whole point.
Yeah.
And I don't, I'm really not trying to make waves.
That's fine. That's what you want. I will share them with you, and I'll share them with the public at the same time.
That would be great. A public question. I appreciate it.
Anybody that has any emails on SSBC, we've been sending those or copying those, and I've probably sent 500. I don't know.
I have all of yours.
SSBCRR, which is our open records. That way, anybody can get in and request them and see them if they need to.
Yeah, it's nothing personal. I just, I just felt like it was...
I was, it was, it was in the Chattanooga, you know, quoted what you said, so I'm still a little bit tender about this. I feel like I was falsely accused. And then, wait, I'm not done. And then pushed to discuss this, when I said, I'm uncomfortable with this, and I was still pushed, and I continued. I think that was wrong. And I understand the passion that people have when they're falsely accused of something, because in this, you don't want to just sit and whine in this body. That's not what this is for. So you try to deal with it diplomatically. It didn't work out for me that day. So, and it, and it was in the press, it was in the press that this happened, that I am...
Not that I said it.
It was, well, I don't know if we want to go into it again, but I could read you the quote, because I haven't.
But maybe I didn't see it, but I have no desire to go into it unless you want to. I just would like the emails, and then I'm done with it.
But understand, so Chris, this is basically saying that you would give any email out to where you were talking to someone about this subject in general. Is that what you're agreeing to do? Any email that you have with somebody?
I've copied Amy on everything I did.
Every email conversation that you have with someone, you've given them all to...
So that I'm in the loop, yeah. And we've got open record to claim.
It seems like you're going against the public record law, and we want this to be as transparent as possible. You actually read an email to someone that you've been back and forth with, yet you haven't produced that even though you asked for it. That, that, to me, legitimizes whatever the paper said. You read in the meeting. It's on the tape. So there are emails out there. And was I answering a question in what I read to you about the SSBC? Not that I'm aware of.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying. So don't worry, I've already created a packet.
If you're communicating on behalf of something that, that you are not the liaison to, I think that we all need to be included in it. But that's all I'm saying.
And for clarification, you weren't answering, I thought you meant my question, but obviously, you were having questions back and forth with whoever you were emailing about, and you felt strongly enough that you had to read it here in a public, open meeting.
No, I wanted to show you that I'm not answering SSBC questions, and I said I was uncomfortable doing that. And I still stick by that. But this is fine. I've already created a packet of everything I've gotten, but I think you guys are making...
And we should be uncomfortable with that. We should let the council. I have erred in trying to answer people's questions, because I've been going to this, and I think Dick made a fabulous point previously, which is, then they're taking us as authorities on the issue, and we're not authorities until this report comes out.
That's, that's what I thought we decided to do in the beginning.
And I just think this is not a transparent and open process. If we don't give everything we've got, and have dealt with this, into wherever it needs to go, so anybody can check it. That's just my two cents. I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, Dan. I just think it's important that everybody follow that same process, or it looks like we're, we're doing something untoward.
And in my defense, I tried to resolve this through email. We weren't deliberating on anything, and it, and then I just, it fell off.
I'm going to release all those.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. I'm not, like I said, I'm not, really not trying to create a problem.
All right. Agenda for next meeting. Call order, pledge, invocation, roll call. We have approval of minutes, so we'll have minutes to approve. Citizens' opportunity to address council. Resolutions, approvals, purchase of radio for the police department. Is that anything we need to talk about? All right. MAC board appointment. We'll have, what did we pass today? Resolution.
Nothing, nothing will come back on resolutions, but hopefully, we will have a resolution to accept the roads in Wildridge.
Okay. Wildridge Roads.
Amendments of development.
I'm guessing we won't get the survey for the country club before then, so that won't, that won't be on here. Public hearing 2017 for the tax rate increase. What, is that, is that second reading?
That's before the second reading. The tax rate increase and the budget are combined in the same ordinance, but we're required to have...
Public hearings are...
Public hearing on each, so we delineate that. And so we have a first reading, public hearing on each, and then thereafter, we'll have the second reading.
What are the rules of public hearing on those? The same thing, three minutes talk, or what?
Whatever you choose as chair, but normally, it's a three-minute speaking session.
So if we hold the same thing, if there's, if somebody has a...
The public meeting is a little different. It's actually intended to be an interchange.
An interaction back and forth?
Yeah. As opposed to citizens' opportunity to address the council, which really is...
What do you suggest?
The citizen waiting. Is that, citizens can have communication during the meeting with the council about the rates that you're choosing for this...
Well, it needs to be more than two, three minutes, huh? What do you suggest?
You can open it up. I don't know. I, I think you're going to have to play it kind of by ear.
Okay.
The concern is going to be, how many people do you have on there? How much time is it going to take? And that's the bottom line.
All right. If it is more, if it is more back and forth, I think we play it by ear, but I would want to put, you know, I want everybody to be heard and have enough time to be heard, but I think we need to put a cap, or if people start straining and things outside this topic, as far as the budget, I'm assuming we can say, hey, that's not exactly what we're here to talk about at this time. Ordinance, so we'll have the second reading of the budget. It requires three, correct?
No.
Just two?
Two.
So it'll be good after this meeting, and we read it. Okay. Discussion, other business, and German. Anything else?
Moving.
Okay. Other business. Anything, anybody else? Anyone want to talk about? Dan? Amy?
Dick, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Amy, when she came in, and it may not be anything we have to address, because I said we don't know the extent of the conversation, but the discussion regarding the loan.
They kind of came to an agreement. They were interested in looking at the fixed rate for the 2.75, or the 2.0, I mean, seven years fixed rate.
2.55.
Seven, or nine.
2.7. Okay.
Oh, 8.1.
Was it 7.9?
Yes.
Okay.
Four. Oh, credit card.
Yeah. No, no, no. Just for the loan, the $3 million loan.
It seems like a six...
For the fire department.
Skip, Darby.
The budget, Phil, was reminding me of this, and it's, it always sounds bad when I say something like this, that I don't, I don't need you to approve it, but I just kind of want to run something by you. With this continuation budget and everything, we're in a position where our, the raises and everything have been put on hold. They are budgeted for the full year. My preference would be when the budget becomes and goes into effect, that we, we make that retroactive to July 1. It's a few dollars.